All right. We can go ahead and get started. The date is Wednesday, June 9th, 2021, and this is the second budget hearing session that we will have with 13 departments being heard this evening. So without further ado, I'd like to start with TJO O'Connor. And then we'll pass the two councils for any questions for each of these items. So with that, I'll start there with TJO.
Good evening. Hope this is fine. Do all well. I have just a short, a short little thing to say in front of you. I'm sure you've had the opportunity to review it. The FY '22 budget reflects a $1,597,000 budget. Of that, rent is $325,000. Taxes are $115,339. And utilities are $106,000. TJO's projected revenue is $727,527. And there's also $90,000 in grants. That leaves the cost of the entire animal control department to the general fund of $779,020. That's for three urban cities. And that's all I have. I'm happy to entertain any questions and hopefully I can help.
All right. Thank you, Pam. At this time, are there any questions from the council? Again, I'll ask one more time. Are there any questions from the council? All right, Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pam, who are the participating towns in the TJO and are they all up to date on their payments?
Chicopee and Holyoke, and yes, they are up to date.
Was it Holyoke that wasn't paying for a while, a few years ago?
We had a challenge with Holyoke, I think it was last fiscal year there. At their budget, their final budget vote, animal control was cut. So they had to go into some other funding mechanism to reinstore it, to reinstated. So yes, fortunately, that has not happened to date anyways this year.
I want to make sure Holyoke in particular is paying because they're getting community mitigation payments from MGM, which, you know, that, that's a stretch as it is. So thank you for staying on top of that and making sure that all those items are up to date and providing these services to the surrounding towns who pay. Thank you, Pam.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton. Are there any other questions from the council at this time?
Yes. Mr. President, just joining you guys now, and I'm glad I came on while you're on, Pam. I don't know if you've discussed it, but any particular difficulties or burdens that you had because of COVID.
Sure, yes. I appreciate that question. It's a great question. And it's actually a very complex answer that I couldn't capture everything in the, in the, in the time that I have tonight. But there has been an enormous increase in responsibilities, in part due to the pandemic, but it's kind of a perfect storm nationally. And the Northeast and Massachusetts is not free of this. There is a massive veterinary shortage. It has reached a crisis point. As a result of that, the average pet owner has been having very difficult times seeking help for their animal. During the pandemic, it's estimated that 23 million pets were added to households and, in addition to what is normally added to households, which has put a strain on veterinarians. That in turn, those are people of average to above-average means that are struggling now to get their animals veterinary care, which has left our most vulnerable population in dire straits. And what that has done is lead them to reach out to whatever options they can find. TJO has become the safety net as other organizations in our community have had to limit their services in part due to the pandemic. So we, in addition, we are faced with increasing regulations and guidelines that were asked to follow in March of 2020. The State Department of Agricultural Resources implemented 3-3-0 CMR shelter regulations, which are 13 pages of, in my opinion, complex regulations that we must now follow. And, and there's animal. The Association of Shelter Veterinarian has 57 pages of guidelines that were asked to follow. Our own audit department, of course, has high expectations of us. So this is, I think the pandemic exacerbated all this. You may recall, we also now own all of our cruelty and neglect investigations because the MSPCA had to restrict services, excuse me, from across Massachusetts. They're now primarily focused on the other end of the state. So this is really turning into what I'm going to describe as the perfect storm and transformational change for our department that we're still trying to figure out. It's going to take some time.
Well, since you're discussing the budget, have you requested or have you sought additional personnel to help you deal with all this?
Yes, in, in the budget in front of you, we were approved for a part-time maintenance person to help. We're dealing with some challenges. Facilities Department is keeping up the best they can with this building. But without maintenance or housekeeping here, it's, the, the regular staff is unable to keep up with it. So we do have a gift that a part-time position for maintenance was added. I am disappointed that we aren't able to touch our animal welfare and animal care staff. We aren't able to realize an increase this year, but I cannot understand any more than I do the difficulties facing the city. So we're going to make the best we can with very adverse conditions.
Well, I think this calls obviously for a further conversation to see if a city can be more helpful. Because everybody loves animals.
And I think what's not always recognized is they really play, play an incredibly important role in our families. And there are studies that have validated the effect on, the positive effect on health, mental and physical health that animals have. So it's an area we don't want to dismiss in our, in our, for our residents and our families.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Are there any other questions at this time for TJO? Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Allen? Counselor Allen, can you hear?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm unmuted here.
You're good. You're good. We can hear you now.
Okay. Pam, is that, the impact you were just talking about, is that due to COVID?
In part due to COVID. There was already, I don't expect you to remember, but in 2018, our veterinarian, our veterinarian of 10 years at TJO opted to leave. The challenge to find a new veterinarian because of the veterinarian shortage at that time was, I want to say eight to 10 months it took us to find a vet. And now that has just gotten much, much worse. We've noticed the unfortunate demise of BCA Boston Road Animal Hospital in the city. So it's really being felt far and wide. And it was just exacerbated, although not caused specifically by the pandemic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Are there any other questions for TJO at this time? Going once, Counselor Whitfield?
Good evening, Mr. President. Hi, Pam.
Hi.
Thank you for the awesome work that you do in your department. I just want to ask you, so like, I know you're gaining one part-time FTE. Do you think that you're adequately staffed to handle the increased amount of pet workload that you are gaining currently?
No, our staffing levels really are unheard of. And we're, this is a really a resilient bunch that is energized by adversity. So it again is just, I think, a terrible situation of so much need within the city and having to make some very difficult decisions. So again, no, I don't know if every, any department head thinks they have enough people, but I do. I am extraordinarily concerned about our reopening and how that will look. Beginning to, to plan for that has been an obstacle that I'm not sure how we're going to get through right now.
Mr. President, have I made comment?
Yes, CJ.
So the only request we had from Pam Peoples was for a part-time maintenance manager which was put into our budget. She has not raised these concerns about opening up post-pandemic. We do have pandemic money coming in, so we're happy to have the conversation. The only thing that was not funded in Pam's request was a community vet program, which we're looking at to get more regs and more information around. So I want to make sure that this wasn't a request and that we didn't deny a request because of the workload. So I'm happy to talk about it, happy to meet on it, happy to look at the pandemic money to address the needs. But I want to declare, this was not requested.
No, TJ and I, and I, and I'm asking because at times, going through the budget process, at times departments think they will be cut different positions and acts anyway, based on, you know, usually they're level funded or you got to take a certain amount of a decrease anyway. And so when you look at putting your real-world budget, your real-world budget together, that was a term that I remember, you're like, okay, they're going to have to cut anyway. So maybe I shouldn't add all these positions that we really need and then have to, you know, cut them out. And I'm sorry, Pam, I do see your hand. I'm just thinking from my perspective and working with the departments, sometimes it's a difficult choice. Like, just give me, just give me what I already have. Don't cut those. And, and I'll be happy with that. That's why I'm asking the departments right now to be honest with where they are. And Pam, I just want to say some departments did say they were adequately staffed, so some didn't. So I'm not, I'm not suggesting that this was a need, TJ, and you guys cut it out. I'm not suggesting that at all, but I want.
We do want to address the needs of the TJO. That is not what I'm trying to say. And I, we do have a part of money to address. I mean, I think everything we read is every, people got animals and certainly dogs that they are not capable to care for once they go back to work. And so we know there's going to be a need. It's just, we got to work together to figure out how to properly address it.
No, great. And I hope that definitely happens. So Pam, I know you wanted to respond. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, TJ. I wasn't implying that they requested something in the, in the finance department cutting.
And I, I, and I think we have to have a follow-up conversation if we can, TJ, because it was my understanding and my intention that there was a full-time animal welfare specialist and a part-time put in as my additional budget request. So somehow if that got lost between our departments, then there, there's certainly something glaring there. And I, the error could absolutely be on my end. But this is, this, this was, this was there and needed. But I, again, I understand there's a need and some tough decisions.
Counselor Letterman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Pam, it's great to see you, as always. Apologize for being a little late. I had an issue with the Zoom. I just had a quick question. I haven't looked at this as closely as I have in past years, but where are we on the lease at the TJO site? What year are we in of that?
I have, I would have to look that up and get back to you. I am not certain. We, I think we still have a long ways to go. My understanding was at a bit of a different level than I just kind of learned about it when it was done, but when the lease was signed. But my understanding is that was a 25-year lease, and I think we're only into it about five years. So I think there's still a long way to go. And TJ, the finance team may know that better than I, but I think we, we've got a long ways to go.
TJ, any thoughts?
No, I think Pam is accurate. I think we're only in probably the first three to five years of the 20-year contract or lease that we have. This, this property, as you know, we've had some issues with it, with the legal challenges. And now we own the lease and the taxes and the utilities and the maintenance. So it's not exactly the best situation, but it's where we are in order to have the TJO facility even open.
Sure. All right. Thank you all. And, you know, obviously, anything we can do to help, help folks out over there with their staffing levels, I'd be in support of as well.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Are there any other questions for TJO at this time? Going once. All right. Well, we will then move to, thank you, Pam, we will move to elder affairs at this time. Is there someone on the call for the department's affairs?
We have Sandy Federico was on.
Did you say she was on?
I saw her initials on one of the call, one of the phone ones.
Marcus, I know Sandy's on vacation this week, and she told me she was going to be calling into this. Maybe we should skip elder affairs and see if she gets back on.
Yeah, certainly. We'll play it by ear for now and just skip it in and come back to it when she has the opportunity to join us. So with that being said, we will move to Health and Human Services.
Remember for Health and Human Services, Commissioner?
Mr. President, I don't see anyone's name on the list.
Right. We will skip Health and Human Services at this time as well. TJ, if you don't mind, maybe perhaps follow.
I'll call both of them.
Thank you. We will move to libraries. Molly, feel free. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Good afternoon. Good evening. I'll just be brief as well and will entertain any questions you have. The approved budget for this year, the mayor's approved budget for the library is $5,250,450. It's a level service budget. And it will include all of our current positions. We staff nine locations, 268 hours a week, and I'll maintain all our hours and services. It can help us continue our program and outreach team efforts. We'll continue to provide programming in adult literacy, lifelong learning, after-school programming, services for teens, our mentor programming and services.
Am I okay? Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, Commissioner. We will circle back with your.
I'm so sorry. My computer is not working well. So thank you.
No worries, Commissioner. Molly, feel free.
Sure. Early literacy, community civic engagement, workforce development, and customer service. This budget does include funding for Read Right Now. And, you know, our challenge will be, as we look to reopening, is to incorporate some of the current programs and services that we are very, very appreciated by the public, curbside service, and virtual programs. And continue that as well as blending that with our traditional programs in-house. So our reading success by fourth grade is, and it's third year, we'll be receiving $200,000 from the Davis Foundation. And our funding meets all Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners standards for public libraries and state aid to public libraries funding requirements, which is really important because the state aid has increased. There will be approximately $375,000 in fiscal '22. So that's sort of a brief overview.
Great. Appreciate that. Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make sure I'm muted. Yeah, thank you for that, that report. We all know how important libraries are. They can be a lifeline for people. I'm wondering about grants. How much of your, are grants included in this budget? Or this is just the city side?
The $5 million budget is just on the city side. And it's about 80% of our operating costs, about 20%. We raised about a million dollars in funds. The biggest portion is about $375,000 from Springfield Library Foundation that offsets our general fund costs. And to about $250,000 from dating public libraries. And then the $200,000 grant funding success, as well as a lot of federal small grants, you know, $10,000, $20,000 Mass Cultural Council. So it roughly is about a 20% grant-funded and 80% general fund for all of our public library services.
Well, I think we all know from voting on the grants that you seem to have a lot of good luck in bringing in that kind of funding.
We have a great staff who write a lot of grants for us. Jean is up there in the corner.
How about your, the fundraising campaign? Can you make any comments on that?
Sure. The original commitment from the Springfield Library Foundation is $2 million towards the East Forest Park Ranch. It's a five-year campaign. I think we're about the third year. And have raised, the foundation has raised close to 1.6 million. So they will continue the campaign until we reach the $2 million goal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. Hi, Molly.
How are you?
A couple of questions on staff. I'm good, thanks. Staffing. You said you had an increase of seven FTEs over fiscal year '21. What was the reason for that?
The increase is the Read Right Now staff that were funded, you know, by, last year by the, two years ago by the Halls Community Agreement from MGM and other sources of funding. This year, all of those positions are in our general fund. So we can continue the program.
So the, so the continuation of the Read Right Now program has more of a concrete cost to us than it did when it was.
Correct, correct. It's about $298,000 for staffing for that program.
And prior to that, it was grant-funded?
Correct, correct. Yes.
All right. Okay, and good explanation. And the, you know, what do you have for open positions out of this 18, you know, roughly 89 people?
We have several vacancies right now. Probably about five, maybe five FTEs. I haven't, you know, I don't have it right on me, but those are all important positions for us. And we're, some of them already are in the pipeline for, have been posted and we'll be interviewing. Some are in the requisition mode and have to be approved by PRC. And we have a couple that we have to submit requisitions for. But they are all really our staffing, as we all say, you know, we have, each location has a really small staff, you know, some five FTEs, some five and a half FTEs. And they're covering six days a week and 30 hours a week in their locations. And so all of our vacancies are really essential to the funding.
So they're approved, basically you're saying their approved positions are just not filled right?
Right, right. Some of them are waiting for approval, but they will be approved. I'm assuming they will be approved.
So when you say approved, that's the PRC that has to.
Correct. Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you. Molly, how many, nice to see you, by the way. How many, how many non-duplicated participants do you service in the Read Right Now program?
They are capable of serving up to 75 students. And they have been, right now, they have about 45. But they have been doing remote teaching for the past year. And so have, also have a waiting list and are trying to contact individuals on the waiting list this summer to get them ready to add to the program in the fall when we can be able to do in-person learning.
So this is like a weekly program that participants attend?
Yes, they come, some once a week, some twice a week. They're full classes. They're held at the High Point Adult Learning, not Adult Learning Center. And they are taught, the classes are taught by adult education teachers, most of whom have master's degrees in education. So it's not, it's a, it's not a one-on-one. It's a classroom approach.
And what's the age of the participants?
They range, they have, they range from 16 and up. So we have some younger people. We have some who are, you know, in their 50s and 60s. So they range all over. And people who went to, when students are admitted to the program, it's free for them as well. And they sit down and do a brief, you know, intake. And they have goals, very personal goals for learning. And some are, you know, like, I want to be able to get a job. I want to learn how to get a driver's license. I want to get my citizenship. You know, to the point where we've had people say, I couldn't read to my children, but I want to learn how to read to my grandchildren. So we have people who come in that cannot read at all and leave the program reading. And then we have a partnership with the School Department Adult Education Program that is in the same location. And then they can then go on to pre-GED and getting their GED and hopefully going on to higher learning as well.
That's great, because I was going to ask you, how do you get those referrals? So it's through the Springfield Public School?
Some through the schools, some through social service agencies, some word of mouth. You know, there are people that have always are calling and are interested in entering the program because, you know, not being able to read is certainly, even if it's not job-related or workforce development, it's a sense of pride in being part of your family. And so we never have a problem having people on our waiting list. We wish we could serve more people.
And finally, I'm going to ask every single department, do you feel like above the Read Right Now program that has been transferred to the general fund, that you're adequately staffed to service your participants or constituents?
I think so. I mean, we, we have a formula for staffing. And as Pam said, everybody always wants more staff, but we're certainly able to, you know, provide all the programs and services in a normal year. We have over 600,000 people that use us. We have about 75,000 people with library cards. They borrow, you know, over 600, sometimes 700,000 items a year. We have 5,000 programs that have been attended by close to 70,000 people. So, you know, it's obvious, you know, if you have more staff, you can open more hours. But for the hours and services that we have, we're able to meet the needs of the residents of Springfield.
Yeah, hopefully we can extend those hours. Maybe that can be part of the discussion to.
Sure.
To full, to full services, because that's what our residents of the city of Springfield need. So thank you, thank you for answering that honestly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Letterman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Molly, great to see you, as always. I'm grateful to you and Jean Canosa for giving me my first job stacking books at the Mason Square Library. Today, I can do the decimal system with the best of them, thanks to you. I just wanted to, I just wanted to say how great it is, I think, that we're able to continue the Read Right Now program. I know it comes at a cost, but, you know, when that program was first set to be cut, unfortunately, because of a decision at the state level, I had a chance to go and sit down with some of the staff, the teachers and the students there. And it really is an incredibly unique program. As a matter of fact, the only adult literacy program in the entire region. So if we weren't carrying that, there would really be no resource for these individuals. And I mean, honestly, I had to commend them for their bravery in terms of really stepping up and the students, that is, stepping up and taking on something that, that obviously was really scary for them. But hearing the success stories from it, I really think it's very much money well spent. And I'm sure that it is, it really reciprocates manyfold in our community and in our economy by having those individuals at a place where they are able to be literate. So I just wanted to commend the finance department and the libraries for working that in, because I know it was quite unexpected when it first came. And so hopefully. because I know it was quite unexpected when it first came. And so hopefully we can even expand it in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Consul Letterman. Are there any other questions for the consul at this time? I'm sorry, for libraries at this time, it's been a long day, folks, I apologize.
We'll take questions to Mr. President.
All right, seeing none, thank you, Molly, for, for that. We will actually jump back to Elder Affairs at this time, since I do see Sandy, and then we'll follow up with the Commissioner for Health and Human Services. So Elder Affairs, you have
Mr. President, Sandy was having trouble getting off mute. I don't know if you have the ability to unmute someone as
Yes, SDF, I believe. It should be asking you, Sandy, to unmute. Okay, there you go.
Yep, I got it. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Sorry about that. What you have before you is Elder Affairs' FY22 budget. There were no additional budget requests in the FY22 budget from Elder Affairs. So the only changes you'll see are in the cost of living allowance page, and that's, that's pretty much it. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Right. Thank you. Are there any questions at this time? Any questions from the consul at this time? Consul Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. Hi, Sandy. Thanks for joining us from your vacation. Just a quick question on staffing. I know you're not at full staff. How many openings do you have?
I have three vacancies, Consul Allen, right now. I just filled the senior program coordinator's vacancy. I have an outreach coordinator position, a site coordinator, and what's my other one? The transportation coordinator.
All right, so three openings, okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Consul Allen. Consul Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I hope you're enjoying your vacation, Sandy. You know, a lot of the other departments have mentioned how COVID has, has impacted them, but you, with the seniors, it must have been really very difficult for them because of, you know, the lack of interaction. How, how would you say that hasn't affected your ability to deal with the seniors? And are you back up? Are you all open everywhere, or is that coming?
That is coming. We are not currently open. And the impact, as rightfully stated, was tremendous, is tremendous. It's, it's hard enough with seniors when we are open to combat that social isolation that sets in. And for those that, you know, we were their daily access to food, socialization services. It was extremely taxing. I don't think I could maybe capture that in words, to be honest with you. What we had to do was step to the plate and get the job done. So our services remained open, even though it wasn't in person, they couldn't come to the center. And then we had to get creative with trying to make sure the seniors were fed, number one. We are delivering meals. They're getting breakfast and lunch seven days a week. And we're also trying to do some creative programming. And right now, we're transition, excuse me, transitioning into outdoor programming. We were supposed to start this week, but the weather didn't cooperate, much, much too hot for that. So we are going to be doing some outdoor programming. We did order some canopies and pop-up tents to shade them so that they can be outdoors and see us face to face. And then, of course, our, our parades have been a huge success. And it was just another way to, to visit, albeit quickly, with our seniors and to give them some information and context that they needed.
And you also are the beneficiary of grants and you're
We are, yes.
Yes, I know you're, I know that your St. Patrick's Day one was great. You could tell that we're so happy to be out and actually seeing other people, you know?
Yes, and I thank you and the other counselors who, who attended for showing that kind of support. They, they talk about that afterwards, just so you know that your time was, was well spent and noticed. We got a lot of cards, a lot of phone calls afterwards. Just, just, they're so grateful. They're just so grateful.
I have to tell you, when I pulled up, I was amazed at the number of cars and, you know, people that really wanted to get out there and interact. So you're able to do this all within your budget?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
All right, well, keep up your good work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Consul Walsh. Consul Whitfield.
Hi, Sandy. Thank you for all the great work you've been doing. I'm happy that there will be a Juneteenth celebration at the Senior Center on June nineteenth from twelve to three, the Raymond Jordan Senior Center. That is great that we are diversifying in our community and celebrating things that's important to everyone. I'm gonna ask the same question. Do you think you're adequately staffed to service the residents of the community? But also, I'm gonna add another caveat to it and ask, was there anything that you requested as far as staffing goes in your budget that was not approved as far as staffing goes?
I guess I'll take that question first. There were no asks for additional staffing, but we were given the opportunity to fill vacancies, which I'm in the process of doing right now. Once we get up to a hundred percent staffed, I don't, I don't anticipate any problems in terms of being able to satisfy the community of seniors that we're serving.
Well, that's fantastic. The seniors are certainly happy to have these resources, as I talk to them on a regular basis. And so thank you for the great job that you continue to do, even though it was closed during COVID. I think you guys did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Consul Whitfield. Consul Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Forgive me if, if this was already gone over and I missed it. Do we, do we have an anticipated reopening date for the senior centers?
We had initially said that we would open on August ninth, and the next day, the governor came out with releasing some of the barriers to opening. So what, what's happening now, Consul Letterman, is that Patrick Sullivan and I believe someone from HVAC is going to all of the buildings. And that's, this is true for both libraries and Elder Affairs. And once they can release these buildings and deem them safe and appropriate by putting in some safety standards, then we're talking, next week, actually, Commissioner Colton Harris and I spoke today. And we're gonna be meeting Monday to talk about the reopening.
Okay. So I, and the reason I, I ask, because I'm curious about the reopening date. And also, I know that not in this last fiscal year, but the fiscal year prior to that, we had had a lot of conversation about transportation for seniors to and from the center. And I know with COVID, certainly, certainly that has been a discussion that we have not had. But are we, within the budget, still gonna be able to provide some level of transportation, especially to the Ray Jordan Center from different areas of the city? I believe, I know the, the bus was delivered, and my understanding is that's been being used to deliver meals. So do we anticipate putting together some sort of transportation service?
Consul Letterman, the bus that, the new bus that we received hasn't, hasn't had its christening launch yet. We've been using the old Elder Affairs vans and Commissioner Colton Harris has allowed us to use two of hers. And we've also partnered with the transportation company for the schools and, and they are helping us to deliver those meals. So that's what we've been using for that.
But do you mean we have the bus?
We, we have the bus. Yes, we do. It's, it's well-hidden.
Sure. So i- is there a plan in place for, for when we reopen to utilize that?
Yes, my transportation coordinator is out on an injury. He just had surgery. And he has his CDL. This bus is larger than our old one, so we need someone with a CDL. So I'm, I'm hoping that he'll be back before we open and that we can move forward with plans for transportation. Also, PVTA has agreed to continue with their Free Tuesdays for seniors. I know that that's exciting. And also Springfield Partners is gonna continue to do their free service to our AJ three days a week.
Perfect. Excellent. Well, thank you so much. And I'll look forward to the reopening and being there to visit with folks again.
We'll let you all know. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul Letterman. Are there any other questions at this time from the consul? Any other questions at this time? All right, seeing none, we will then move to Health and Human Services. Commissioner Colton.
Good evening. First of all, let me apologize. They changed my computer out in my office, so I had to come home to access this meeting. So thank you very much. I am not going to spend a lot of time talking about my department. I think all of you know, we are level-funded. I have asked for a deputy commissioner. We are missing an environmental health director. I am still looking for community health nurses. And also, just making sure that we are, as a department, responding to many of the challenges that we have in the city, including enforcing the plastic bag ordinance. Consul Letterman, we are working towards that. So the department is level-funded. We have some vacant positions. And I think you all know what we've been doing for the last year. We've been responding to a pandemic. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about my budget.
Thank you, Commissioner. Consul Whitfield.
Commissioner, I would be remiss if I didn't thank you for all the hard work that you've done in the community. You can, you know, always have some computer problems and things happen whenever. No one's perfect. So I just want to thank you, because on a daily basis, I see you or I hear your name. And I, and I definitely appreciate everything that you've done throughout COVID. I'm gonna ask you the question. But first, I want to talk about the three positions that you mentioned, the deputy commissioner of Health and Human Services, the environmental health specialist, and the community health nurses. Are all these positions currently budgeted in your level service budget?
Yes. Well, let me start with you, and thank you so much for everything that you do to support my department. I am extremely appreciative. Yes, Consul Whitfield, those positions are in my budget. The deputy commissioner, I have three or four individuals I will be interviewing. So those positions, to my knowledge, are, are found in the budget. So thank you for that question.
So in addition to those that are already funded, are there additional positions that you currently need to service our community appropriately?
Absolutely, absolutely. The public health infrastructure, not only in the city of Springfield, but across the Commonwealth, has been woefully underfunded. And so as a system, we need more staffing. However, let me just say that right now, I think we are able to hold the line or at least service the public based on the current positions. But I am not going to say that public health does not need more positions. Particularly for me, it is the epidemiologist and those data positions that we need to, in order to do the drill-down work that needs to be done in the city. So thank you for asking that question.
You're welcome. And hopefully, we can continue those discussions and see how we can get Health and Human Services, which is a very, very important department, as all of the departments are in the city of Springfield, more assistance. So thank you for everything, and that's it.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
All right. Thank you, Consul Walsh.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Yes, thank you, and thank you, Helen, for everything that you, you've done this year. I have two questions. One's about grants, because as, as we all know, you are very successful in the grant department. And how, how much of your budget is grants?
The grants probably are about over three million dollars. The biggest grant that we have is our Health Center, which is about two-point-two million dollars. We did get additional funding this year for COVID from the State Department of Public Health. But over three million dollars of the budget of my department is grants.
And you would, without the grant, you wouldn't be able to provide certain services? Would that be fair to say?
That is correct, particularly for our homeless population. As you know, we are a health center that services the homeless population. And so most of the funding from the federal government that we get is to provide health services to the homeless population. So correct, Counselor, thank you for asking that question. We would not be able to service that population without our grants.
Okay, and I know you, certainly COVID has been particularly difficult on your department and yourself. But what would you say was the biggest challenge? What was this?
Well, there are a couple. I think that my biggest challenge is the communication from the State Department of Public Health to local public health. I do not believe that local public health is as valued as we need to be. So the communication early on was difficult when it came to testing. And vaccination is now another area that we are collaborating on. So I would say to you that the biggest challenge is, number one, staffing the, the testing centers. And now testing vaccination sites becomes a challenge for us. But we are moving through that. We are supportive by the, by the city. Funding has been made available for us to hire clinical assistants to do our jobs. So I am grateful for that. But it has been a fourteen-to-fifteen-month challenge, Counselor. Thank you.
And who, who could have known in planning that you would be facing these issues? So job well done.
Thank you, Consul Walsh. I have had a journey over this last sixteen months. So I appreciate your support, as well as all of the counselor's support around COVID. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Consul Walsh. Consul Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner, it's, it's good to see you. I feel like we're in meetings very regularly. But I just had a question about the budget relative to the increase that the city council approved and the mayor appropriated last year for the Office of Racial Equity and also the youth outreach program. And so I just wanted to know if those items are continued in this year's fiscal year budget.
It is my understanding that the mission continues to be funded in the budget. I am in contact with the mission on a weekly basis. They provide me reports. Let me know what is going on as far as their outreach is concerned. But yes, Counselor Letterman, that funding will continue next year with the mission. I do have their data reports. Johnny Mohammed is in contact with me on a weekly basis to let me know about the outreach that is happening with their organization.
Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Consul Allen.
I'm all, thank you, Mr. President. I'm all set. Consul Walsh asked a question I was gonna ask.
All right, thank you. Consul Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually also was gonna ask about the Office of Racial Equity. Commissioner, did you, did you speak to what it is that you guys are continuously doing with respect to the Office of Racial Equity? Or is the, is the mission program pretty much what encompasses what it is that you're doing in the Office of Racial Equity?
Thank you, Counselor Hurst, for that question. Let me also thank you for consistently Um, thank you, Council Hurst, for that question. Let me also thank you for consistently reaching out to me um to offer your support around um COVID as well as our uh programs. Yes, uh, we do have a staff person who is a part of the Office of Racial Equity. She is in the process. Her name is Chris Mary Gonzalez. She is in the process of developing the Neighborhood Strategic Plan so that we can work together around the Office of Racial Equity. She is also uh met with the mission Brother Johnny and had conversations around how we can collaborate. I have um set up meetings for her with uh Commissioner Clapprow. Uh, we needed to cancel that meeting uh because of a conflict, but that is also something um that she will be um uh working on with uh with the uh Police Department. So yes, um, I think that she is working to do a a good job. And also, the mission, as you know, is a part of that effort. And they are also um uh have boots on the ground every day. Uh, and again, they do collaborate with me and communicate on a weekly basis.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I appreciate everything that you've done uh as a result of 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 COVID and keeping this city afloat. Uh, TJ, I also hope there's going to be some hazard pay or additional funding available for our department heads, who really were essential workers throughout uh all of COVID. So, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hurst. Are there any other questions from the council at this time? Any other questions? All right, seeing none, Commissioner, I also just wanted to add um piggybacking on what Council Hurst said. Definitely was a tall task dealing with this pandemic. And uh, I just want to thank you for being a willing participant in working within the context of COVID-19 response subcommittee on a weekly basis to provide information in real time, which I think was such a valuable resource for the residents of Springfield. So I just want to thank you for um adding that to your already busy schedule amidst a pandemic especially. Um, so.
Thank you, Council President. Again, I am very grateful to have a city council and a mayor and a team that really has supported my department through these last um fourteen to fifteen months. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to at this time Veteran Services.
Good evening, Mr. President and City Councilors. We made our we made our targeted goal of the bottom line, 1,679,319. We made that number. There was a variance of 828, but we have cut all the fat out and the meat out. And if we cut anymore, we'll be cutting the sinew. So we are at bare bones with that number.
Okay, thank you, Mr.
It will be a challenge, but as always, the Department of Veteran Services has stepped up and been very innovative in finding ways to make it happen. And we will continue to do that as always.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Belton. I will pass it to Council Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Mr. Belton, I just want to say thank you for the hard work that you do for the veterans in our community. The question is going to be the same. Were there any positions that you asked for in the budget that were not approved? And do you think you have adequate staff to service the veterans in our community and the surrounding communities adequately?
Uh, that is yes to both questions. The only catch to that is nothing different than off partner experience.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up?
Turnover turnover is something we always experience. And we are hoping that we will experience minimal turnover. But in the world of veteran services, because of the aging population, there will be a number of career opportunities that show their face in the immediate future. And I have no idea of knowing who will say that it's my time. That's me.
So um, you said yes to both. So the first question was, did you ask for a staff that was not um added to the budget?
No, no, we did not make any request for any additional FTEs.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Whitfield. Councilor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President, and and thank you, Tom, for your uh continuing service to the city and for your services, United States Marine for our country. Um, I'm curious to know, particularly with the um the pandemic, are you getting more money in from the state or or is that kind of funding staying the same? The the money that you get for benefits to the veterans, is that increased at all?
No, not to my knowledge, not at this time.
Uh, is that something that's in the pipeline?
I wouldn't even say it's in the pipeline.
Oh, yeah, because it would it would seem that, you know, that there should be an increase. I mean, so, you know, usually there are increases in in benefits.
If there are increases in benefits, uh, we will pay out any benefit increases that are um allowed by state law. So if it becomes state or federal law, we will fund uh the benefits that our veterans are entitled to. I agree with Tom. I haven't heard anything about increasing the benefits as we give them out to our uh veterans here in Springfield.
So I I guess what I'm trying to get at is that the funding that you get from the states to pass on to to our veterans has stayed the same? There's there's no increases in that? Doesn't go up every year?
They give us a 75% reimbursement of whatever we spend from the prior year uh benefits for our veterans. And to my knowledge, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, we haven't turned any veterans away. We align them with better services through the other agencies and other services that may be around uh to help augment some of their uh challenges of funding or uh fuel or any assistance we provide.
Thanks. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Council Walsh. Are there any other questions for Veteran Services at this time? I'll ask again. Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Belton. We will continue. Thank you. We will continue with DPW at this time.
Good evening, Councilors. Chris Signalley, DPW Director. Um, few things on the DPW side. We have a hundred and thirty-six employees uh in the department. Eight are in the general fund and fifty-six are in the enterprise fund. Uh, our big difficulty over the past year has basically been backfilling positions. Uh, we've had twelve to fifteen openings throughout the year. And uh, it just takes a very long time to go through the process for backfilling a lot of these positions as we kind of chase them up and down the totem pole. If a senior person retires, we have to then move people up and then backfill that position, et cetera, et cetera. So that process takes forever. Um, and the hiring's been very difficult, uh, number one, with civil service and number two, with residency. Uh, of trying to work through civil service lists, as an example, for drivers, we used to have over two hundred on the list. That list now is less than forty. Um, so we do not have the people to choose from. Uh, what as far as the um uh the employee numbers, we also had uh two, four positions of interns, two in engineering, two in the garage. Um, very difficult last year because of the pandemic. We could not have uh the interns in the garage. They were uh with us as part of Putnam. Uh, and they did it as part of their their program. Since they were not in school, they could not be with us. So uh, it was a great program. Uh, we've hired two students immediately after graduation. Uh, we weren't able to do that this year because the students haven't been working. So uh, we're going to be starting that program up uh in the fall again. So hopefully we'll be able to run some kids through that uh through that program. From a budget perspective, uh, um, our general fund budget for this coming year is 11.1 million. And our enterprise fund is about 10.8. Uh, one of the thing in our budget with the number of employees that's not in there right now is because the uh uh co- uh contracts have not been approved. So therefore, there are no raises and or retros uh listed for um union employees. So uh, our our numbers are ver- are very uh level funded. However, the there would be some higher numbers in there if those if those numbers uh were in there for the union side. Um, I'm both the uh general fund and enterprise fund. Um, enterprise fund, we're purchasing five new vehicles, uh, three uh, excuse me, three fully automated vehicles and two rear loaders. Uh, and we will be moving forward next year. On the general fund side, we're uh behind a little bit in replacing a lot of vehicles in the city. Uh, so we're gonna have to do that. Uh, over the last year, we have started to apply for a significant amount of grants uh as programs have opened up in the state for different programs. So through our Complete Streets program, our Hazard Mitigation, et cetera. Uh, we've probably brought in over $2 million um in grants for particular projects that we've been able to do uh with the DPW. Um, as far as the budget itself this year, moving forward, it is basically a level funded budget. And knowing some of the questions that you've asked about staffing in the past, uh, a couple of years ago, the DPW added seven new employees that were basically to uh start restart up our sidewalk program, which has been very, very successful in being able to get work done around the city. Um, and in doing that, one of the, I don't think there's a department in the city that wouldn't say they could always use more people. The difficulty that we do run into are these people that we would hire. Um, we then have to make sure that they are drivers um so that we can use them during the winter, people who are doing construction work, uh, et cetera. When we get into the winter months, you know, November, December, January, February, March, uh, we just don't want to have people standing around. Uh, we want to make sure that uh, you know, they can be used as drivers, sanding, salting, et cetera. Um, so and uh, we're going to be bringing back, I had conversation with TJ, we have one employee on a grant uh that will be coming into the general fund side. Uh, so from a from an employment standpoint and uh personnel standpoint, the the one difficulty we do run into is obviously the vacant positions and workman's comp. Uh, one of the things we had to do this year is we did have to terminate four employees that had been on long term comp. That then rolls into the side of having to backfill their positions as well. So that process of somebody being on comp can be on there for almost two years before we end up getting approval to be able to backfill the position and being able to get those people off of the uh uh the city roles of roles as far as being an employee with the DPW. Um, so over over the last year, one of the things that I have to state is our operations in uh Solid Waste Division worked 100% uh through this COVID. No uh working remotely, no nothing. They were full time in. Did an absolutely fantastic job with everything they had to do. We did have to split a lot of people up in vehicles uh to accommodate the work, but the work did not slow down. Uh, we did not stop anything that we were doing over the past year. We continue to do construction. We continue to do sidewalks. We continue to pick up trash. Um, we we did run into a little issue in the fall with falling behind on yard waste. And that was at a time where, number one, uh, we were having uh five to seven people out due to COVID and having um a number of vacancies inside of Solid Waste. So we went outside uh and hired a company to assist us for manpower to get us through the winter. Um, and so from a DPW perspective, the uh requests, uh, when we received our level funded budget, we made a number of requests uh for some additional funds uh, you know, for things such as fuel, uh, vehicle service, et cetera. All of those have been added into the budget. So um, you know, as I said, everybody can use more people. But as far as I'm concerned at this point, uh, the DPW budget for moving forward into next year is solid. Uh, this past year for um snow and ice budget moving forward for next year is the same number, 1.51. We had three plowable events and ten sand major sanding and salting events throughout the winter. Um, the number of plowable events uh the last two or three years has been very low. Um, and we had extreme difficulty trying to find vendors uh who wanted to plow for the city of Springfield. And I think we ended up with eighty something, uh, ninety something this year, uh, where we used to have a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-five, but the ones that were here did a fantastic job for us. Uh, so that's kind of the highlights as far as the DPW is concerned. We have a number of major roadway projects going on and a number of that are going to be continuing into next year. And I know uh uh Councilor Devia, I'm gonna need to get in touch with you. We're gonna need to set up something for the X. We're gonna be starting up that project again. We've worked through all the uh design issues on that. Uh, and we've been doing a number of presentations for the various projects that we're working out with Mass DOT around the city. So I'll take any questions that anybody has regarding uh DPW.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, Councilor Brown, I'll pass it to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just said, uh, and and thank you, Chris, for the work that you do. Um, I just had a couple of questions as far as uh the actual unemployment portion. Uh, what what type of advertisement are you doing as in in um for the different position?
Well, the the difficult thing that we are is is we are hiring under civil service. So when we're hiring under civil service, the only thing that we can do is go to the civil service list. Uh, and one of the major difficulties that we deal with on the civil service list is uh, not to is is age. A lot of people on civil service lists are between 65 and 70 years old. Uh, not that they don't want to work, uh, but you know, that's that's where you're starting on some of these lists. Also, a number of people on the civil service list are not necessarily Spring City of Springfield um uh residents. So if we we cannot bypass anybody on the civil service list if they are not a Springfield resident, and if they offered the job and take it up and do not want to move into the city, I can't bypass them. I then have to stop and we have to regroup uh and wait a period of time, which could be a month or so, before we go back to the civil service list and see if there are any new people that have applied for it. Very rarely do we have to go out for something very, very specific. Where we are now with one of those items is with Signal Tex. That requires some very, very specific uh work. And what we end up doing is reaching out to all the different groups, agencies uh throughout um New England of people who are registered. Because when we look for certifications, those certification lists are available. So we do that all over the Northeast. So um, when we do, when we do that, we've been relatively successful. Uh, but we're having a, we're we're not, we as a DPW are not getting the numbers of responses for open positions any anywhere in the city like we used to in the past.
When these positions open up, I'm just curious, as far as someone who has the actual qualifications, how would they know?
Uh, well, as I said, everything's, we start civil service, so they have to be on the civil service list. Um, so if it's a general advertisement such as Signal Tex or things like that.
Yeah.
How entities that people work for, groups that they belong to, things like that, that they would start getting in their circle. We, you know, and it's not just an ad in the paper type of thing. And through HR, uh, we work with them on reaching out to different groups of what we need to do um throughout the city.
And do you?
And through the through the region as well.
Do you advertise in papers?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that's done. It's also goes through um um different groups, uh APWA. Um, uh, I'm drawing a blank on the other um the West Pass Highway Superintendent's Group, things like that. We reach out to uh a bunch of the vendors uh who we deal with. Because a lot of these um.
Why 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 I mention this, Chris? I don't want to be too long. I apologize. Is that um, I would. Is that um, I would just, would just wanna make sure that we're also advertising. In um, the black and brown and um, the, 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 that, those actual um, papers also.
Yes.
Um, do we do, are the point of view Metro and the other Latino, do we put that in their papers?
We advertise in as many as we can when we have those positions that can be advertised. Uh, but of the hiring that we do, you know, probably one position a year. Might be uh, publicly advertised that way, the rest are civil service.
Okay, and then I just.
Try to reach out to people to get them to be on the civil service list.
Just real quick, and I'm done, uh, and I just wanted to know as far as the um, when you're hiring the actual. Uh, people, is there a way we can maybe train them to be drivers, is that something that we're looking to do in the future? Um, cause I'm, I kinda would look in the future, try to keep the plowing in-house. Because it's always a big issue when we're looking for different vendors. Um, I know the, the procedures is to usually give them the money after, I don't, you know, basically something like that. But I would like to have our guys trained, and then we can do it more in-house and show more accountability. If that would be possible to train them, that's all I have.
Yeah, we have a, we have a program inside of DPW that we pay for employees to obtain their CDLs. Uh, the only issue is with it is that we are not going to hire somebody for a driver position that doesn't have a CDL. But people that are in other lower positions inside of DPW, who are interested in getting their CDL. Uh, we pay for that, we will also pay for uh, hoisting licenses. Of people that are up over levels that wanna get the certification to be able to be considered. Because what I wanna do, uh, you know, I mentioned civil service, when we do have an opening, the first thing we do is advertise internally. So if people do have their certifications, they can then get um, uh, promoted up into the driver position. So we do pay for uh, classes and certifications to obtain a CDL.
Thank you, Chris, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, counselor Brown, counselor Woodfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, thank you and your team for being essential workers. For always um, coming out and doing your job. Counselor Brown asked one of the questions that I had to ask, and that was about how do they become drivers, do they get their CDL, so thank Counselor Brown for asking that question. This next question is more for TJ, do we know how many essential workers we have in the city? We have that number?
Hold on, I do not have a number of essential workers as, as it was defined as the. Pandemic redefines what is an essential worker is and has been. Uh, so I can put that together and get that to the city council.
Thank you very much, and then, um, Chris, you mentioned your internship program. Um, where, where do you get the interns from?
The uh, the engineering interns we advertise for. So usually in April or May, we advertise for them and they work with us in the summer. Pay, the uh, program for the part, for the uh, garage is, we have a program set up directly with Putnam. Uh, as part of their work that they are doing, uh, i- is the vocational side for people who are learning to be mechanics. Uh, we work with the gentleman at uh, Putnam to identify people who wanna come and work with us. Uh, and so what we end up doing is each, each of the, the spring or the uh, the spring and, and. Or, excuse me, the fall and the spring semesters, those two different semesters, uh, we work directly with uh, Putnam identifying those people.
I think that's a fantastic program, I didn't even know that you offered that, but I think more city departments should offer like an internship. Program like that, um, so thank you for that, and that's all I have, counselor.
All right, thank you, counselor, counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, good afternoon, Chris, good to see you. Chris, I got some uh, quick questions, um, with the sidewalk uh, program, uh, can you tell me what? What's the line item I'm on for that?
It is. I'll find it here, uh. When we added, when we added it in, um, a few years ago, it was a total of about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, it's about two hundred and fifty for, you know, actual things like concrete and stuff like that. And then we also have the cost for the employees, so the sidewalk program was about seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand dollars.
So that wasn't the last year, is that gonna be roughly the same for this cycle?
Yeah, yeah, and those, cause we added in those employees at that time, and that was the process we went through with TJ in the mayor's office to get that off. Uh, to get that going and determine how much it was gonna cost, and we identified the positions, the exact cost. Actually, materials and, you know, trucks and things like that.
Right, a- and in terms of mileage, if you're able to tell me, how much sidewalk repair does that get us?
We do, we do two types of repairs, number one, we do, uh, wherever there's a problem out there, we're gonna re-. We're gonna probably dig up a sidewalk and put down some asphalt to make it's uh, safe. And then we are following up separately with a separate crew doing actual concrete sidewalk replacement. And I would say we're probably doing a hundred to a hundred and fifty locations a year with that program. We are probably doing another fifty to sixty a year. Through our, probably closer to a hundred, but fifty or sixty through CDVG. And uh, through when we do paving programs, we're also doing that as well, so. Between all the three programs, we're, you know, we're doing over three hundred locations a year, which sounds like a good number, you know, we have. Forty thousand residents, so there's, you know, there, there's a lot of properties that need attention. When people call in, it ends up on, you know, we go out and temporary repair it, it ends up on our list, and we get out there. Um, uh, we kinda move around the city more ge- uh, geographically. Uh, to start doing sidewalk replacements, so we started this year right at the end of March and are moving forward right now.
Now, is that first call first basis, or is that based upon the uh, the need?
Uh, can you say that again, counselor?
Is that, is that first call first basis, or is that based upon the condition of the?
Oh, we try, we try, we are trying now to get the oldest ones first. Uh, simply because they've been waiting for the longest. Where we run into, uh, I don't wanna use the word complaints, but you wanted to complain, you know, as an example, if your house called. And you were the oldest, however, the two next to you are in just as bad shape, and they called only two weeks ago. We're gonna do all three, because it's just logistically, it's easier, so. What we usually do is we start with the oldest, work our way around the city, we end up trying to do multiples, uh, whenever we need to.
For the purposes of time, I'm gonna combine one of them, uh, if you go, we need to page fifty uh, on the uh, ledger of expenses. Um, the street side engineering, it says overtime, four hundred and four thousand dollars. And then what really caught my eye was electricity, three point seven million dollars. Uh, can you give me a quick comment on those?
Yeah, the, the three point seven million dollars is what we pay ever source for the streetlights. For the, in the streetlights.
Okay, okay.
That's what that is, and what was the other one?
Four, four?
I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm losing.
He's saying overtime, overtime.
In, in which, in which group?
Uh, I have it on page fifty, he says overtime, four hundred and four thousand.
Uh, I don't have the same document that you do, uh.
Chris, could you just speak to the overtime piece then?
Yeah, just cause what we, what I, what we have as far, what I have in front of me as far as our budget. Yeah, I, I, I don't have that document, counselor, we have a, we have a budget in a different format.
Okay.
We have our departments broken down into divisions, uh, you know, one division has fourteen thousand. Uh, one division has sixty, one division has. Two thirty, you know, for example, uh, a majority of that number there is snow and ice. Uh, for the overtime, uh, thirty thousand dollars of it, because basically, um, uh. When we're working, when employees are working during the day, and if there's a snow event, uh, it's all straight time. You know, the regular time, anything that's uh, passed there, regular time gets charged to overtime, so most of our snow. Work that we end up doing gets charged overtime, so that number, two hundred and thirty thousand of it is in the snow and ice. The rest of it is split up between traffic, streets, um, engineering, et cetera. For uh, the different work that we have to do, a lot of it is traffic. Is in streets when we get called for uh, weekend and overnight work.
Wait, now, my last question, Chris, uh, I know we talked in the past, uh, privately, ourselves on a one-to-one, and the council as a body. Uh, with issues, no, and I know in the past we have identified that we have a, a problem attracting people to drive for snow removal. Uh, is there any money within your budget this year for some sort of uh, incentive slash bonus? To attract people, to entice them to, to drive for us during the winter?
We did, we did that la- we did this this past year, uh, we raised the rates significantly. Hourly rates, and we raised uh, an incentive rate, if we could get people to sign up. Uh, we even pushed the date back, it was after Thanksgiving this year, if we could get you to sign up. We were putting an even higher premium on your hourly rate uh, to come and drive to the city. Now, as we went through last summer, the major problem that every contractor that we are dealing with. Is people are not getting CDLs, people, younger people do not want to work overtime. And even our vendors that we have, uh, who cut back on the number of vehicles, we had a couple vendors who used to have seven, eight, nine vehicles working for us. Uh, they only registered three or four this year, for the simple reasons they said they can't find people. They didn't wanna, they didn't wanna sign up seven trucks and only have three show up. Because it kinda obviously costs them money with insurance and things like that, so. We've really raised the rates higher, we wanted to make sure we were better than other communities, better as, as best we can be with Mass DOT. Uh, to work in the city, um, you know, we, we kept the good core. Uh, of people, so we'll probably end up going through something like that again this year. The other thing too, in the winter, a lot of people that are on unemployment are not gonna come off unemployment to plow for a storm. You know, especially when they're getting a pretty premium to be on unemployment, so if they come off unemployment. You know, to work for a week with a contractor, then, you know, then they're, they might be losing out, and plow for two storms, they might end up losing money. That was a little bit, the COVID uh, had a little bit of an issue with that this year too.
Oh, thank you, Chris, uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, counselor Davila, counselor, hmm, give me one second, I'm sorry, Letterman.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, uh, speaking of, speaking of three point seven million in electricity to ever source. I, I really think and hope that this will be the year that we start pursuing LED streetlight conversion. I'm, I'm hopeful that with the infrastructure money that will become available, hopefully in the near future. Uh, we might be able to be in a position to finally consider some creative solutions around that, if we wait. Much longer, we're gonna be one of the only cities left in, in Massachusetts that hasn't made that switch, so I hope we can have that conversation, and I appreciate. The conversation about putting that in the capital plan that we had, uh, in counselor Walsh's committee a couple of months ago, my question today is actually about recycling. Chris, I know we have, uh, we saw a big, big increase, well, we didn't have any recycling bill previously. So I know last fiscal year that was a big increase, I'm wondering, um, where are we at this year on the recycling contract? Who's, I believe it's with Waste Management, and uh, who's it with if that's incorrect? And then what is our, uh, what's our term there, and what are we, what are we looking at in the years ahead?
Uh, our contract is with Casella for recycling. Uh, by far, by far, by far, the city of Springfield. Has the, the best recycling contract of anybody from Western Mass. Uh, a number of communities, uh, some selected who are still dual-stream or single-stream. Elected to go with the DEP, uh, uh. Uh, contract, which we, under no circumstances wanted to. DEP contract was a hundred and forty-six dollars a ton, we are now paying one nineteen, moving forward to next year. Um, we will, it's a two-point, built-in two point five percent increase, so we'll be going up to one twenty-one. We also created our own uh, AMV formula, average market value for the materials uh, that gets sold. Uh, we were looking at last year probably uh, every month of about thirty dollars a ton. So netting out at like, you know, eight, nine dollars a ton, having to pay for it. Um, last month, or for the month of June, we're looking at a rebate amount of eighty-seven dollars. So, the net is really going well, now the, the issue that I see with that though is. A lot of this, this, this is truly a high spike. Last year, because of COVID, there's a lot of vendors out there that just cannot buy raw materials, because these. Facilities were not open, they're not available, so they had to turn to the recycle community to buy these things. So anticipate as the general, you know, plastics, uh, in, in the, and newspaper and. Paper in general start to open back up again, that the number's gonna come down a little uh, with that, and our term is three years. Um, with them, uh, and we would. Going, excuse me?
We're in year two now.
We're going into year two, yes, we're going.
What's our total cost, annual cost?
Um, from a budget perspective. What we have in the budget, uh, our budget number that I deal with, and I just wanted to find it real quick. Uh, we are. We have eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in the budget, and basically the way we have it set up is, is uh, on the expense side. We expense it out at the full rate of one nineteen. Behind this is the revenue side, which, the revenue side I can't touch, so it's just the revenue side. And I believe we had the revenue side at, I think it was thirty-five or thirty-eight dollars a ton. Uh, on that, so, from a budget perspective, we put in the full amount, because when we get the, when we get the bill. It's not a net bill, it's, it's a bill for the one nineteen, and then separately, they send us a check, uh, you know, later in the month.
So we're making back like a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, but.
Yeah, we're me, yeah, definitely, and right now, it's probably the best that it will be, uh, but we've done pretty well over, over this year. And I've just heard other communities just complaining, because they, their average market value uh, calculation that they've used is. Bad, to say the least.
All right, thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, counselor, counselor Walsh.
Uh, I was interested in uh, sidewalks and recycling, which, which we've covered, but I'm running about bulk pickup. Are, are they gonna be, um, I believe this year, you probably had a lot more people putting things out for bulk pickup. Would that be a fair statement?
That would be a fair statement.
Yeah, and so are there any changes to that budget, or, uh, as the, I know when I called for bulk pickup, there was a, uh. Called maybe in, in June, and you had like a six or eight week timeframe, is that still the same, or is, is that improved?
No, the timeframe has come down, uh, what we did is, near the end of last year, we increased the number of stops that we're doing. Uh, one of the problems that we're running into on, on the recycle, or the uh, the bulk side is. Our material has to go to two different places, uh, we used to bring it to one place, it has to be split up, electronics go one place. Regular bulk material goes another, uh, and we have in uh, in, in the budget. What we think is an appropriate amount to cover the expense side, uh, this past year, uh, this current fiscal year. We're looking at a twelve percent increase in the volume of trash and a seventeen percent increase in the volume of recycling. We've looked at about, uh, I think it was like eight to ten percent for uh, bulk material. Uh, as well, uh, but it's really been in the traction recycling side.
Okay, and did I hear you say you're starting to go forward with the plans for the X?
Uh, well, yeah, when we had the public hearing a couple of years ago, there were obviously a number of comments, criticisms, concerns.
Right.
Over the last year or so, we've addressed all of those with Mass DOT. And before we, I should say, we're starting the seventy-five percent, so what we wanted to do was go back and just present it back to the public again. Uh, to show the change that we made, you know, we're saving, the, the road's been narrowed uh, back to, not back to what it is now, but. Narrowed significantly to what was proposed, saving almost all of the trees, uh, and. A little bit, so, all the concerns that a lot of the people have, I think we've addressed, we wanted to get out to the public as soon as we can.
Yeah, well, and I'm sure counselor Davila can, uh, relate to this, but most of the meetings I went. relate to this, but most of the meetings I went to for the uh, plans for Sumner Avenue were, were not well received. So I, I hope that has been addressed.
They happen, yes.
Thank you, Councilor Walsh. Councilor Allen. Councilor Allen, you're muted.
Uh, Chris, you talked about having several, kind of being in a position of always having several open positions. Can you put a number on what the number of open positions is now?
Right now, right now, we're at six.
Six of your eighty-seven or whatever.
Yeah, six of our, of our like hundred and thirty. Uh, so we, yeah, we're uh, we're all, we're always chasing uh, positions around. So we always have a few. Uh, we're much, much lower right now on workman's comp. Uh, because we, we are usually dealing with four to seven every month. We're, or every week we're down to about three right now. Because we've got a lot of the long-termers off.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you for that number. Thanks and thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Allen. Councilor Hurst.
Chris, just wanted to follow up on Gasoline Alley to see where we're at. Respect to the bridge.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get that taken care of. Uh, we had to go out and get materials for that. Uh, and as I said, Mast DOT right now is in the process in the next year or so, there's going to be a big construction project there. But we're going to get that area secured the next day or so.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Hurst. Do a time check. The time now is seven o'clock and we are just about halfway through the remaining departments. Uh, so I would just ask questions. If it's possible, I would appreciate that. Next we have.
Beaming Councilors, how are you tonight? On the Park Department, uh, we've, we've had a uh, a busy year this year, you know, with the COVID. Like DPW, all of our employees worked through the um, the COVID crisis. They didn't work remotely. And uh, we managed over twenty-five hundred acres of open space, a hundred and sixty traffic islands throughout the city. And just proud of all the work that is done by uh, these great uh, men and women that work for the department on a daily basis. We still have a very good program with our Sheriff's Department. We have uh, reduced that to um, eight sheriff crews. We had a retirement on one of the crew members. And just with COVID, they have less people. So we have, we'll have eight crews going out from the Sheriff's Department this coming year. And we currently have sixteen million dollars in uh, park uh, improvement projects going on across the uh, city at this time. So uh, I want to thank Finance for all their support. Um, it, it's been, uh, like I said, a difficult year. Lindsay, TJ, Melanie and Aaron have been right there twenty-four, seven working with us as we uh, dealt with this COVID crisis. So I'm open to any questions.
Right. Thank you, Pat. I'll start with Councilor Ramos.
Mr. President, thank you. Um, Pat, can you give us an update on Jams Beach slash Loon Pond? Uh, there was a report earlier this week regarding um, swimming locations across the city where our uh, fire department was warning people not to swim um, in Tegubey River uh, near the Indian Leap, which is where a lot of accidents happen. Uh, with people, you know, trying to find swimming locations. Uh, we, we've most recently lost uh, a, a young life in twenty eighteen due to drowning. And as you know, I've been advocating for a safe swimming location in the ocean for many years and I actually have a hearing uh, coming up on my safe swimming bill that I proposed. Um, that, that hearing is on Friday. Uh, but I want to continue to advocate for Loon Pond slash Jams Beach and was looking for an update on that location.
Yes. So we received that grant um, last year. We are completing the design. We hope we have, there is a um, a, a water plant that is considered um, to be uh, through the National Heritage Foundation that needs to be uh, preserved. So that could cause a slight delay. We have a hearing for National Heritage in two weeks on that particular plant. Um, we also received a CPA grant to do a water quality study across our ponds in the city. So Loon Pond would be part of that study. Uh, I don't know if you recall that has a high phosphorus content uh, in that pond. So uh, right now we're concerned to opening it for full swimming, but we're going to do that water quality testing. And probably in about six weeks, we'll be able to release the uh, the complete master plan for Loon Pond. I think everyone's going to be very happy. We are going to include a grass beach area um, for this area. So we will have the option for both fishing and then hopefully if our water quality test come back, we would be able to open it for swimming uh, in the future as well. But we're gonna, I, I can't commit to that tonight till we get the water quality test back.
Sure. No, that, that's very encouraging. Thank you. Um.
But the good news there, there's going to be a renovation of that. And again, thank you to uh, Finance and the administration for uh, helping us uh, find the matches for these grants.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Ramos. Next we have Councilor Whitfield.
Thank you. Pat, first I want to say thank you for all the work that you do as far as like getting these um, you know, community events back up and running. Um, your staff is on point. They help with everything. They guide us in the right direction. I want to especially thank you for helping with uh, the Juneteenth Jubilee Celebration that's coming up. You and um, Commissioner Colton here, they're a hundred percent of the way along with um, the Licensing Department, Alicia Day. So I just want to say, and Chris, and everybody, um, thank you so much for that. But my question is the same. Did you propose any new positions that were not um, added to the budget? And is there a, and I mean specifically, is there a position that um, you would need that's currently not in the budget?
No, no, everything we've asked for has been funded in our budget. Our problem like DPW is getting qualified applicants uh, to apply for our jobs. Currently on the park side, we have eight openings. Um, and we are advertising and re-advertising and our biggest, and then for seasonal help, we probably have forty lifeguard positions available that have not been filled yet. And we also have um, twenty-two rec leader jobs that have not been filled yet. Uh, the administration signed, um, and I think you all received notice that because of the lack of staff for our seasonal, we are for the first time going outside the city. Uh, but we are still hopeful that city residents will see that we have this need. Uh, we're, and we're contacting neighborhood councils uh, as of today to uh, try to get the word out that we need uh, young people to sign up for these uh, summer jobs. So right now, our biggest problem is getting uh, people to want to uh, work for the department and to um, sign up for these, they're, they're really great jobs with great benefits.
Um, speaking of those great jobs, for the seasonal summer jobs, what, what are they currently paying?
Uh, they're, they're set for um, uh, the minimum wage. The lifeguards do pay more than a dollar to more than minimum wage. And we're uh, looking at those structures as we speak to see if we should make a one-time adjustment to try to get uh, staffing in for the summer.
Yeah, because what I've been saying, um, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Pat. That has been a girl on the mayor's office this afternoon. Oh, it was. Okay, great. I think we'll have an announcement on that tomorrow. The TJ?
Yeah.
Good, because I know that I asked you that earlier and um, I, 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 throughout the industry, because I work in um, higher ed and we get folks hired from workforce development, I see that a lot of the organizations are going to that fifteen dollar an hour that um, increase over um, time. And so it might be hard to hire folks at a lower amount than that. So I'm glad that you guys have had the discussion and the decision has been made there. Um, and I think that I had something else, but I can't think of it right now. So um, thank you.
You can always email us if you have any questions. And it's been Helen and I have enjoyed working with everyone on doing this Juneteenth celebration this year and uh, we're always available to help out.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Councilor Whitfield. Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, thank you, Pat, for um, all the work that you do in Ward Four and the different parks that you've um, working on. I, I uh, see Sam Bolden, everything is looking beautiful. I was just curious about magazine. Um, I really, I really, really, really uh, am looking to try to do something um, at Magazine Park. Uh, at some point, I mean, ASAP. Is there a way we can do anything um, for the constituents and the residents for magazine? Because we've been, we've been waiting for a long time.
Yeah. So uh, it's kind of a two-fold answer on that one. One, we do have a CPA application we made this past year, work with them by council. Uh, but TJ called me last week. He wants to do a tour with the finance team to start looking at the needs for the different parks, um, as he's putting different plans together. So uh, we can u- update you uh, after we do that tour. We're going to try to do something in a couple of weeks. Um, a- across the city. Again, we're doing over sixteen million across the city, which is for a city our size, uh, for our, our department is really great work. And um, but we re- recognize there's some needs. So TJ's uh, looking at different funding sources.
And, 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 and if, and if, and if, if we can at least, um, because there is a organization that's out there that um, provides baseball for the inner city youth. And they have tournaments and things out there. And then in the summer heat, it becomes very dusty. It's, you know, it just, it, 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 if, if we can try to get it done, it, 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 it mean a lot to the people.
That wasn't the CPA application to uh, put irrigation at that park. So we would agree with the counselor. So we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, I re- I remember with the CPA stuff and then I, I know there might be ways that we can maybe put something in there a little quicker, um, if possible.
Great. We'll, we'll try to address that for you.
Thank, thank you, Pat. I appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Brown. Councilor Allen.
All right. Thanks, Mr. President. Uh, hi, Pat. Um, thanks for all your efforts through the pandemic and everything. Um, um, I, my question is about um, Lake Massasoit, um, which um, obviously is a, I, it, I, is there money um, in your budget or is it in Pete Garvey's budget or to clean up and all that stuff? Are we adequately funded for? And I, I, you know, TJ gave, told, told me at one point there was some money and just dawned on me tonight that uh, want to make sure that um, whenever we get clearance to go on the pond and start to clean the place up, that there's money to, you know, not just clean it up, but also for, you know, if we do a fertile, a better fertilizer program or whatever it is to keep the ponds, not just Lake Massasoit, but all the ponds um, from having to deal with this weed growth and all that stuff. Can you speak to that?
Yes. So uh, we, again, uh, on that project, it's great work across uh, many departments, uh, Finance, Capital Asset, Tina Quaglado, the Natural Disaster Office and, and the Park Department acquiring that grant. Um, we are waiting for the bid results. So once we see what those bid results, that will tell us what we have left. But I know uh, the mayor and TJ will always find a way to do a, a project uh, the right way. So I, I'm not concerned about that. We just received the map and we've done the drone work to uh, set up the cleanup. And as I spoke to you in the past, we're going to be doing this kind of in, in phases. One, there are certain areas that will require our contractor to do that cleanup. And then there are other areas where we could have the um, public uh, be involved in the cleanup. So we should have some better answers for you, for you on that level in about three more weeks, once the, the bids are fully open and everything's been vetted.
Okay. Uh, so when you say the bid, you mean the bid to actually replace the dam?
Exactly.
Councilor Allen, uh, just to speak on behalf of the administration. This is a once in a twenty-five year uh, opportunity to, to get it right uh, when the, when we drained um, Lake Massasoit. So we're going to make sure we find the resources necessary to do it right.
Excellent. That's great. Thanks, TJ. Thank you, Pat.
Yeah, anytime.
Thank you, Councilor Allen and Councilor Whitfield. If you would just indulge Councilor Hurst, who hasn't spoken on this item yet.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And uh, thank you, Pat, for all that you do. Uh, just to add to the sentiments of Councilor Brown with respect to Magazine Park, I guess my hope would just be to have some general maintenance, similar to what you would do to every other park, happen to Magazine Park. Uh, once a year, uh, prior to the pandemic, we would do unity in the community and it would be a community softball game. And it was like one big dust ball out there. It actually was one of the most embarrassing uh, places to play uh, a community game that, that I've seen. And so uh, to the extent that we could just put a little bit more effort into uh, Magazine Park as our young people are really excited to get back out and actually be active, it would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah. So that, the only way to address that is with an irrigation system and that's a capital upgrade. So we'll, we'll get that costed out.
We, we gotta be able to do, we gotta be able to do something in the meantime, Pat. Like just in terms of, you know, I don't know. Um, I mean, like making sure it actually looks like a field.
Sure.
That would be helpful. I mean, outside, I understand you have long.
I was, I was addressing the dust bowl issue, Councilor.
Okay, okay. I got you. I got you.
I can't, can't control the dust without irrigation.
Got it. Got it. Thank you, Pat.
Yes.
Right. Thank you, Councilor Hurst. Councilor Whitfield.
Thank you, Pat. I remembered what I was going to say. Um, first, I wanted to say that the information that you sent to the neighborhood councils um, to promote the job, can you please send them to the council as well? And then um, number two, I'm looking at your budget and it says, address costs of supplies and contractual increases. And so I'm kind of wondering what type of contractual increases you have.
Uh, we have uh, we have the sheriff contracts. We have uh, our landscape operations contracts. We have contracts for emergency tree services um, and just various contracts for, on the building side for uh, building trades work.
And so with these contracts, you go out for bid to get folks to do the work. How, how does that work?
That's correct. So for landscape services, uh, that was outsourced with the Finance Control Board. We have been looking at bringing some of that in-house. Uh, to date, it's, it hasn't been fully vetted to show that it's, it's cost effective to bring that fully in-house yet, but we continue to watch that. Uh, we have price agreements for certain work for like our tree work and so forth. And so we, we have uh, usually set aside up to thirty thousand dollars a year for emergency tree work. Um, so they all have this natural um, increases in those contracts. So Finance has uh, fully funded those and, and we're very grateful for that support. There's been years in the past where we've had to eat those increases. Uh, we're very pleased with this uh, budget submission this year.
And I'm just going to say this, um, just echoing what um, Councilor Brown has said earlier and other counselors, we would like to see the RFPs, these requests for services um, advertised more broadly, more in um, black and brown communities, minority communities. So there are more fair opportunities that folks in all communities will get the same information are able, and are able to bid on these um, services. A lot of times we are hearing in the community that that is not something that the community is privy to, not all communities anyway. And I'm hopeful that the Office of Racial Equity, Racial Justice Under Commissioner will also um, target what we hear a lot in the community as far as contracts and RFPs and awards go. And so I, I'm hopeful that, and I don't know if this is through procurement or through Capital Asset or through you, that we can get more um, advertisement broadly in more communities. Thanks, Pat.
On behalf of, to talk to the Office of Procurement on that issue. Uh, but I do know everything I believe is also on the city website as well. So.
Thank you, Pat.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Councilor Whitfield. Councilor Davila.
Good, Mr. President. Uh, good to see you, Pat. I just to make sure that I heard you correctly. Did you say that we have a contract with the Sheriff's Department?
Yes, we do. We contract uh, for the correctional officer. And then they bring the inmates out to perform that, to work in community. Um, and we do training. It's part of the, of our, our part in working with the Sheriff's Department. I work with these.
There was background noise. I couldn't hear a thing of what you say. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Hopefully it's not coming from my end. Uh, so we have a contract with the Sheriff's Department where they provide the uh, the correctional officer. And then they bring out the inmates to perform work uh, across the city. If you went into Forest Park today, you'll see the bridges have all been painted. If you went into Forest Park today, you'll see the bridges have all been painted. Um and that's Ray Rivera's group. We have a custodial crew that helps with the maintenance of our park buildings. We have two carpentry crews. Um we had a debriefing through that that correctional officer recently retired. Um and it's really amazing the work that happens with these crews and it it saves the taxpayer over a million dollars a year. But it's also giving pride to that inmate. Uh they leave with a certificate and they are basically hopefully job-ready uh to get back into society. And uh we've had great success. We're probably reaching over twenty years with that program and very proud. Uh actually, we started it when you were on the Ranger Program. And uh it's been very successful.
Yeah, I used to be a park ranger on the.
Yeah.
races and it was beautiful.
So if you remember when you had that, the we started off maintaining terraces with the sheriff.
I'm very I'm very proud of it. It was a cool experience. But just our curiosity, Pat, uh this is a great program, this custodial program. But how much are we paying for it?
The um it it ranges between sixty to eighty thousand for a correctional officer. So there's probably a value of uh six hundred thousand dollars to that that program.
Now, we are not paying anything for the uh police officers, for the um sheriffs.
The sheriff uh is covering all those costs for the uh patrolling of the parks.
Okay, excellent. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilor Davila. Are there any other questions from the council at this time? Pat, I have a a question.
Sure.
Just as it relates to feasibility studies that come uh or that that I should say are reported by way of the CPA process. Um a lot of the studies, you know, for example, like the dog park, I don't know where that stands as it relates to the, you know, the the comments or responses of if it's actually feasible for the city Springfield. So is 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 there some mechanism that can be uh shared with the council? Um in in terms of how to get that information to us, just so we know where projects stand. Yeah.
So I just spoke to Kateri Walsh earlier this week. So she's gonna get a meeting hopefully in two weeks and we're gonna give you an update on all those projects.
All right. Appreciate that. Thank you so much. All right. Moving on, we will go seeing no other questions to facilities management.
Yeah. So with facilities, uh we are approaching over six hundred and eighty million dollars in investment in our city buildings. And I have to congratulate uh the mayor, finance and the city council for your support in getting us to this point. It was evident uh with the pandemic when we had our industrial hygienist tour our buildings. They were extremely impressed with the systems that are in place across the city. Um and the ability of our air systems and our HVAC systems, which has been critical in fighting this pandemic. And uh they had shared with us, not every community is in this uh great condition that Springfield was in. So I again, thank you all for your support and it's been key in the fighting of the pandemic. Uh we've also been successful this year through the CPA committee. We are finally doing studies on the City Hall Window Project. Old First Church uh is started a study as well. And then Tim Sheehan's doing an awesome job. He's included uh the Court Square Project in his uh downtown uh development study. So um we are working great across departments and uh getting work done, uh which is all key not only to preserve First Church and City Hall, uh but also I think it plays a a role in the economic development of the re- of our return to the city. We have a great trades crew under the leadership of John Kerrigan. Again, none of these individuals took any time off during COVID. They worked through it. Um and you saw just the varying aspects from putting up tents uh to putting in uh eye wave technology, the carrier units throughout our school buildings. We're also very proud that every school building reopened in the city of Springfield. If you had heard on the news, some districts weren't opening buildings because uh they couldn't meet the HVAC requirement. So again, we're just very proud. Um we have great uh great teams of people working in our buildings and uh you should take great confidence uh that we're keeping the citizens safe with the improvements. There was a question earlier about the reopening of libraries and uh senior centers. So we're in the process. We just got that report uh two days ago from the industrial hygienist. And the good news is we can just uh simply place the carrier units and those buildings that have steam heat. Uh we, there is a recommendation that Central Library probably would stay closed through uh early September just because the volume of air, it would be just impossible to do that with the carrier unit. So uh we'll have more. So we're gonna be with Helen and uh she'll Helen will decide from that report, the uh the date of those reopenings. But it's all good news at the end of the day. So again, just very proud of the staff of um both departments and uh again thankful for everyone's support to getting us to this point.
Thank you, Pat, for sharing that. Uh Councilor Ramos.
Mr. President, thank you. Um Pat, we have uh the city owns a a mobile stage that we use for festivals and um for events. And we actually um uh either lend them out or rent them out to to different festivals. Um I was told that that is that it was damaged and it needs to be repaired. Is that accurate?
Well, it's thirty-eight years old. It's not roadworthy at this time. We we have gotten some estimates to um to do repairs. And then with the pandemic, that particular company wasn't able to do the repairs. So uh we are searching grants to replace it. The it was the Arts Lottery Foundation that funded it the first time. So we are in conversations with them. But for this year, that will not uh be out on the road.
Okay, so it's not worth repairing. We're just gonna replace it?
Well, we don't know. So again, the company that was going to do it, uh they had a layoff, so they're not able to do it now. So and that was gonna be a volunteer effort. So we are uh we're searching for maybe a vendor that could do that type of work.
Okay. My next question is in regards to the uh the shooting range. Um is that in this year's budget?
Yes, it is. And uh I believe the money's been refunded. So again, uh e- everyone uh finance has not refused any requests for repairs to buildings this past year. They went above and beyond. And again, they they were available both to me twenty-four seven. There was many a day on Sunday. I'd be texting Lindsay that we needed something uh for a building or whatever, a deal with the COVID. So uh everyone's been very supportive. Uh over one point five million was uh provided to my department in dealing with the COVID through five years. So it's uh been uh it's just been great working with everyone.
TJ, is um how how much money is in this uh this year's budget for the shooting range?
Uh Councilor, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars is budgeted for uh the cost of the the firing range for fiscal year twenty-two.
And uh how did the city, so that obviously everyone knows the city council took this out of the budget last year. Um it's being proposed in this year's budget. How how did the city end up paying for the shooting range last year?
We did not get into the, we did, we saved four hundred thousand dollars on the lease based upon when they opened. And then we uh reduced the facilities budget by four hundred thousand dollars uh and offset that with additional uh capital money for Pat to make sure he can do the work within his uh facilities arena.
I'm I'm sorry. I didn't get that last part.
So we made sure, I made I made sure Pat knew he may made whole for everything he needed throughout the fiscal year. And we and we allowed him to spend uh capital money to cover the cost of repairing the buildings uh as they came up.
Gotcha. Okay, so you we we took a stand last year and we voted to cut this out of the budget. It's being proposed again this year. Um I I don't, I'm not gonna support. I know that I'm not gonna support it uh being in a budget this year. Again, I suggested that you use Pago. I saw that there was a thirty-one percent increase in Pago this year or proposed thirty-one percent increase. Um now, uh it's it's uh do we do you do we ever even get a legal opinion as to whether or not it was it was legal? Um I know that I I made several requests from uh Attorney Abicula. So what what's um you know, how the city was able to enter into a twenty-year agreement without city council approval? Uh do we have anyone from the law department?
Uh I can have any. I can have any. I don't know if you, I believe you drafted a a legal opinion or a theo- theoretically drafted a legal opinion uh and opine that it was legal because it was a unique property designation properly procured and properly negotiated with the owner of the building.
So I'm I'm again, Mr. President, I'm not I'm not going to support um a budget that includes uh eight hundred thousand dollars for the firing range. I made it very clear that um that it was it was a decision that was um made without city council input. It was tone deaf, in my opinion, because of the timing. And uh and we're not out of the woods. Uh we're you know, we're we're still in the middle of a national movement for police reform. And until we address the issues and um the the training that is needed to address police reform and until the city can the city takes police reform seriously, I am not ready to support any firing range. So, Mr. President, um I I I'm hopeful that my colleagues will support me on that. Um and 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 this just isn't a time to be talking about uh 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 a twenty million dollar firing range. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ramos.
This is exactly the time when you talk about a twenty million dollar firing range. This is exactly the time. We need to certify our five hundred offers twice officers twice a year, and they need to do the best of the best. They need to have de-escalation training.
I'm sorry, TJ.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I keep I got my ass kicked last year over this. I've explained the business reasons, and this is a political reason, not a business reason.
Mr. President, um a- again, we stood in front of City Hall and following the George Floyd incident, and we demanded police reform. To this day, we still do not have police reform. To this day, people still mistrust the Police Department of the City of Springfield. And until we address that issue, I am not going to support eight hundred thousand dollars to teach our officers how to shoot. We need to address police reform first. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Ramos. I will pass that to Councilor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh first of all, I did ask sort of questions uh to TJ and uh before I ask my questions, I do want to say that I personally, Councilor Davila, do recognize that the shooting range is an absolute necessity. Uh this is not a want, this is a need. Police officers need to be able to shoot straight. It's for lack of other words, it's a safety issue. My biggest concern here is um that we're using seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for twenty years, which equals twenty million dollars.
Councilor, can you please speak up? I'm sorry.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, speak a little louder, please.
And so my biggest issue is that we are doing seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for twenty years. It equates about twenty million dollars in two in twenty years. I I I made this uh um argument last year and I make it again. For that, I believe that we should bond money and build the cops, a brand spanking new police station. The houses, not only better facilities, but also shooting range. That's my opinion. Now, I know we are doing better with debt service. We're getting rid of some debt. Uh I agree with TJ. This is, we should be talking about this, but I have a hard time twenty million dollars for twenty years. And yes, but we were kind of left out in the blank on this. So that's my biggest concern. I recognize, believe me when I tell you that I recognize that it's a need, and it's a need that needs to be addressed. My specific question to TJ, and TJ, thank you for working on this budget. Uh how much money, I realize COVID was an issue, but how much money do we earn in revenue from the shooting range?
So due to COVID, we have not earned the revenue yet because we had to uh make sure that it was up and running and that we had all the uh kings worked out. I was there today and I went to Sergeant Roe, who we were discussing exactly that today. Uh what are we gonna charge and how we've generated revenue? But I want the council to understand that I know as unpopular and the timing may have been off of the decision is, and I acknowledge that. And I know that you didn't like to hear that we were doing it in spite of the budget cut uh that the council made. This was strictly a business decision that made sense for the Police Department. If I I went out with an understanding and expectation to pay four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a long-term lease for a firing range that had probably twenty days. And what we ended up getting was a free firing range, multi-use scenario, training class, I I U. And that cost us, I'll just say, eight hundred thousand. So in the math and in the way we figured it out, I was saving a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the I I U being a house in a different location. I was saving a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on uh ammunition that we were buying to shoot down in Pearl Street's basement. And I was gonna generate two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand in revenue. So it made it a net uh effect for the city when we're up fully up and running of four hundred and fifty thousand or less. And I thought, and I still continue to think and will continue to advocate, that that is a tremendous investment. Please go see the facility. I saw it this morning. You would not be let down to see what exactly we were able to accomplish for this facility.
I I did see the facility uh when it was initially being built. I have not been back since and I would love to see it, in fact.
I will bring all of you up there whenever you want. We'll give a nice tour.
And I will make the necessary arrangements to do so and follow up with you. Uh and I get it. So you're saying that we save roughly about four hundred fifty uh five hundred thousand dollars a year?
When we're up and running, we will, we the net cost of the city will be three to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When I looked at finer and outside alone in Monson, that was gonna be three hundred thousand dollars. And that was outside, not year-round, not temperature control, not lighting, not scenario-based uh policing, which is what you want our police uh have scenario-based training. This has been a home run. It's the best on the East Coast, if not one of the best on the East Coast uh training facility.
And how much did you say that you project uh that we may make in revenue next year?
I think when we get up and running, I would say, based upon the what we're hearing from the police departments and the uh surrounding folks, I want to use it for training for elk license carriers. We're gonna generate significant revenue. I my estimate originally was two hundred thousand, but it could grow. And we just gotta figure out the the best business model of when we and how we staff it and when we lease it up.
So I don't know if this is the right question or the appropriate question at this time, but can you at least give me a thirty-second answer, uh TJ, about the thought of bonding money for a brand spanking new police department with better facilities? Uh can you give me thirty second?
Yeah, but we we look, so two things. One is for a brand new, just firing range, there's gonna be twenty-five million dollars and be five to seven years out to build. And so so that was gonna, that was part of the time of of paying for uh something to be built with much more speed because the private sector can move much quicker than we could. And to build a brand-new police station is gonna be a hundred million or more to build what we need to build. We have the study done. We have everything done. It is just, I do not have the bond capacity for a hundred million dollars. The state said they could kick in forty-five million in a bond bill, but bond bills at the state are just a now acknowledgement of a priority that's not until the governor releases the money. Now, if they tell me tomorrow that they can release forty-five million and I can put in forty-five million dollars for a brand-new police station, I would. However, I would not put in a firing range due to the recommendations by Patrick Sullivan as the facilities director that what we learned in Pearl Street was it is not a healthy environment to have guns being shot in the same building where everybody works.
Okay. Uh well, TJ, unless I fell asleep in in class last time, I it's the first time that I hear that uh this is still being done for the Police Department for headquarters itself. Um so first time I hear this and I would love to to see those and 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 see the the study if possible.
Sure. Pete Garvey, Pete Garvey got it done three years ago.
Okay, it's the first time I hear this. Uh I I know we talked about this and I'm not pointing fingers here. But we've been saying this for a while, this this initial communication here, and I can only make decisions based upon no politics, but the decisions that I'm get, the information that I'm given. Again, I do recognize that the Police Department uses uh but I also have a responsibility to the tax, et cetera, the taxpayers in the city of Springfield, uh to use their money wisely. Uh so the the time my questions and TJ, I I will follow with you later. And uh I I would love to go and and take a tour of the current police um of the shooting range. Uh thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Davila. Councilor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. Uh speaking to that issue from Councilor Ramos and Councilor Davila and uh Davila and um and TJ, um this was an awkward thing last year. Um it was an awkward thing. My issue with it last year was the process. Uh when we I spoke to TJ about it, it wasn't a good process. I think he agreed. He apologized. We went forward. That was my issue. The issue of the facility itself, the finances of it, I I defer to the finances. the finances of it, I, I defer to the finance guy, who is TJ. I mean, I looked at it. It made sense to me. We're gonna, we're, it's not, it's not versus zero. It's versus some other number. So it's not twenty million versus zero or fifteen million. It's, it's another number somewhere. And that number, the, the, the option we had, the only one we had, was unhealthy for the police. Um, so I, I, the way I look at it is it's a, we, we always talk about police training and needing more for police training. I've circled here the amount of money I can see in this budget for police training. When we get to the police budget in a little while, we can talk about that. This is a training facility. Unfortunately, um, police need to, need to be good, good at, at, at shooting and firing for the situations which, uh, protect them, protect the public, whatever. So we all know that, uh, it's unfortunate. But we stood on the City Hall steps a year ago today. I have the reminder article with our picture asking for police reforms. Some of them, I think, have been done. There's some of them are going to take more time than a year. But several of us are pictured in the reminder from a year ago. And it was June ninth, twenty twenty. We all stood in unison, the seven or eight of us that were there, in, in support of police reform, and that is coming up. Those questions are good for the police budget coming up. And I understand Orlando's frustration with some of it. I mean, it, some of it's frustrating, trying to get agreement. Congress is having trouble getting agreement. The state has had trouble getting agreement. It's hard topics. But they're not, uh, but we need to continue discussing them. And if we're all all saying we want them, then we will figure out a way to get the police reform. But relative to this building, I, you know, I think, uh, I would support, I support, uh, what we need to do with this building. I support the money that we're allocating to it. I support the police. And I support, you know, the changes we need to make to the, to police procedures through police reform. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Allen. Councilor Letterman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. You know, I'm sure that we'll, we'll debate this more later. Um, you know, I just wanted to say, I think, I think we all agree that we need to ensure that our police have the best training possible and that their working conditions are, are safe and healthy. You know, my biggest concern, or one of my biggest concerns last year was around the process. And I did request a legal opinion on, on the leasing situation. And, you know, I think I, I just have a disagreement with, with the opinion, right? I mean, the opinion was, was that it was special circumstance and therefore, um, you know, it exempted from any sort of contract over three years. You know, I happen to, you know, have looked into the state law and, and discussed with, with many folks, um, both of, of legal minds and otherwise, that, you know, I, I personally believe that the City Council should be voting on all leases of real property, just as we vote on all purchases and sales of real property. And it's, it's okay if we disagree on that. Um, but that, that was my concern last year, uh, was the process because, as always, I think there's, there's a reason for checks and balances in the system. Someday, we will all be gone, and there will be a different City Council and a different administration, and, and they will need to, to govern in their time, and, and hopefully they can, you know, be able to have the law to stand on. That's what the law is for. And so that was the issue that I raised, uh, last year with it. And, and so I appreciate, um, you know, that concern. But I think that's a larger issue that we probably need to resolve on, on the leasing of real property because the city's not going to, not going to stop leasing real property anytime soon, right? It's, it's essential function of, of us as a municipality. So, um, you know, to answer the question about the legal opinion, that, that was essentially, you know, what wrapped it up was, you know, the feeling by the Law Department was that it wasn't applicable, and it seemed like the Law Department indicated the City Council did not need to vote on leases of any length. Um, I disagree. I think there's, I think there's a state law that, that says we do. I think other municipalities, their legislative bodies, vote on, on leases of real property. Um, but that, that's the status. And it's okay to have a disagreement. I mean, but that, that's where we're at on that.
Thank you, Councilor Letterman. Councilor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to speak on this issue because I knew it was a, uh, you know, hot topic. TJ, um, we did talk at length last year about the process, and I can honestly say that the finance team has been doing a lot better, um, communicating things coming down the pipe. Been doing a lot better with the process. Um, and so I'm glad that, you know, that happened last year so we can get to the place that we are at now where everything is more transparent. Um, while I disagree with, um, the police range last year, we're already in the lease that we have to pay. So that's, that's, it is what it is. What I disagree with was the timeframe that we're paying the lease. I think twenty years is a long time to be paying eight hundred thousand dollars on a facility. So in twenty years, we'll pay about sixteen million dollars. And you said it'd cost about twenty-five million to build one that would be ours that we will own. And I think that would have been a better avenue to take, um, to secure a firing range. But the firing range is here. We need it. We got a lease to pay. And every year when this comes up in the budget, I'm hoping that we don't have to have this conversation. We should pay the lease. We cannot be liable for not doing that. And so, um, that's that point. The point to, um, Councilor Allen's point, it is sixteen million versus twenty-five million. I would have went with the twenty-five. We had it. I, I would have went that way. Reform goes, we can get to that when we get to. Is I don't know where to, and I, and I stood outside today with mass senior action because more reform is needed, more transparency is needed. And, you know, I'm not going to belabor that point at this juncture because it's coming up. But I don't know where this training is. I don't know what you saw, what, what information you got as far as police training, um, is concerned. And we've been asking for it since the G O J report has come out. And we got a little snippet, but I don't know how many's been trained, and I don't know what's really in place from, um, Attorney Pacula. And, um, so we'll get to that later, but this lease is here. We have to pay it. I haven't been for a visit, but love to. I heard it's a state-of-the-art facility. It offers more than just a shooting range. And so I don't, I'm hoping that the council does not have to visit this, um, every year. Thank you.
Mr. Whitfield, are there any other questions at this time? Right, seeing none at this time, we will move to planning.
Good evening, Councilors. Um, the OPID budget is primarily personnel-based. Um, OPID is currently working on the implementation blueprint, uh, an effort to maximize the economic spin-off resulting from the MGM Springfield project. Uh, we continue to work with small businesses in the city with recovery from the pandemic, and will continue to do so with the American Rescue Plan funding as well. Um, we also advanced a ma- major master plan, uh, for the blast zone, uh, this past year, and we're advancing that to the council for consideration within the next ninety days. Uh, we will be looking over the course of this fiscal year, uh, to do implementation activity around improving, uh, traffic, uh, on Chestnut Street, uh, and doing improvements to, uh, Appremont Triangle. Um, the, uh, it's level funded from twenty twenty-one in terms of the budget, and I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Councilor Letterman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Tim, nice to see you. Two months ago, the City Council passed an ordinance to regulate, uh, short-term rentals like Airbnb and HomeAway in the city. And at the time, we had pretty extensive conversation with, uh, the Planning Department, with yourself, and with those that, that report to you about, you know, what would essentially be needed in order to enforce that. It is really an essential ordinance, especially for neighborhoods like McKnight, Forest Park, Make-A-Li, Six Corners, that have, you know, these large properties that could become, um, you know, sort of targets of court, commercial developers that, that want to kind of change the integrity of the residential zone into more of a hotel-style situation with very little oversight. So that's why, you know, we passed that. And I know, you know, Councilor Davila and Councilor Whitfield and, um, Councilor Edwards were all very deeply involved. We had unanimous support. So that is set to go into effect, uh, at the beginning of July. And so I know that we had at the time discussed the need to bring on some third-party compliance in order to monitor those online sites. And it was described at the time as being, you know, fairly reasonable. So, um, I want to make sure that within your allocated budget this year, we are going to have the funds to be able to get this implemented on time.
I think there's two, uh, sides, uh, of that question, Counselor. One is that there are some simple, um, contractual relationships that ultimately can deal with understanding who's been registered, who hasn't been registered, getting notifications out more effectively. But then, within the ordinance, there's specific tasks that are assigned directly, uh, to the Code Enforcement Department. And, uh, we've had that, uh, discussion about what those needs are and what the, the budget numbers are around that, uh, both with TJ and Lindsay. I think there's, and correct me if I'm wrong, TJ, I think that there's a recognition that there are additional costs that are, are going to have to be covered, uh, to, to effectively manage, uh, the enforcement of the, uh, the ordinance. Um, and we're working through those issues right now with, with finance.
So, Lindsay, I see TJ's gone, but, uh, you know, what, what's Finance's position on this now? I mean, I, I really need to see this funded, you know, for July first. So what are we looking at?
Yeah, Tim's right. Um, we definitely understand that there's going to be a cost involved. And we're still working through how it's going to work, what code is going to need. Um, but we're prepared to fund it in whatever way we have to to get it up and running.
Okay, so we're just, we're just looking to arrive at final numbers. The money is there. We're just looking to arrive at final numbers.
Right. Yep.
Okay, yep. As long as we can get, you know, and listen, it, it's going to take some time to have it fully up and running. I recognize that. I mean, even the, just getting them registered, once you contract with compliance and send everything out. I mean, you know, you got to give people time to reply. But as long as we can at least get, you know, the letters out and have a, a mechanism for people to be able to report them. Um, you know, that, that's, that's the first step. So glad to hear the money's there, and that alleviates my concern.
Right. Thank you, Counselor. Councilor Whitfield?
Thank you. Um, it's not a surprise what I'm going to ask. Were there any positions that you asked for that were not, um, implemented in the budget? And also, um, is there a specific position, um, if you could have it funded, that you would, um, ask for?
Counselor, thank you for the question. There was not any specific position that we asked for that was not funded. Uh, we do have some vacancies, uh, in the Economic Development Division. We're in the process of filling those. Um, and, uh, the, it, coming back, I mean, we're kind of carrying over to Code Enforcement as well. Obviously, hiring and retaining employees in Code Enforcement has been an ongoing challenge, um, for the department. But, uh, the, the budget, uh, is fully funded for all positions.
Thank you. And, um, I have one more question about the, um, you know, the business grants. Um, when you first started, we talked about restructuring some of the grants. Have that happened or?
Counselor, I, I, I actually would like to, to bring that before the, the Economic Development Subcommittee. My, my position on this is that, you know, tho- those types of grants, when we do these types of grants relative to housing, they, they are never considered, you know, a, a repayment mechanism uh, unless the property owner ultimately moves out of the site and puts it up for sale. Um, you know, my sense is that this should have been, in terms of procedurally, should have been structured as a burn-off over time. So if the business stayed in business at that location uh, for a period in time, that the, the, the debt was ultimately forgiven.
Oh, like a forgivable type loan structure?
That's correct. And, and that's how most communities operate with these types of, uh, small business assistance, uh, uh, coming from, uh, the Community Development Block Grant.
Okay, now, I just want to add that when you look at the structure, just look at closely what disqualifies an applicant. See if we can give, you know, folks sometimes get in a predicament like COVID and see if we could like, you know.
Absolutely. And, and we've been, we've been exceedingly, uh, uh, we, we've worked with everyone that has had, you know, it, not even just the small business, uh, side of the equation, but anybody that's had, uh, uh, you know, Section one oh eight loans and things like that. We, we've certainly understood that COVID has, uh, had a very big negative impact on their bottom line and have looked to, to work with them in any way we can.
Perfect. Um, I look forward to hearing more about what you're structuring, um, in the economic development. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Whitfield. Councilor Hurst?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Tim, you said you had some vacancies, uh, in the Economic Development Office that needed to be filled. Is that accurate?
Yes, there's been some attrition.
Okay, there's been some attrition. And so, um, and so you've also said you've had some issues with respect to hiring and retention. Is that, is that accurate also?
In the Code Enforcement Department, that's been a challenge.
Okay, not in yours?
Not, well, I, I actually oversee the Code Enforcement Department as well.
Okay, um, interesting. You, I'm sorry, you've always overseen the Code Enforcement?
Yes.
Okay, will we be hearing from Code Enforcement tonight, Mr. President?
Yes, Councilor. They are.
Okay, all right. Okay, I didn't quite realize the organizational structure, so.
Just to clarify, so the council members understand what's under the purview of the Chief Development Officer? I, I basically have all of the housing, all of C D B G, all of, uh, Code Enforcement, all of, uh, planning and economic development.
Okay, so let, let me just speak to Economic Development. Um, you, you, you said you've had some, you haven't had issues in terms of hiring and retention. Not hiring, but retention you've had some issues with.
Not with Economic Development. It, it, hiring in retention has been an ongoing challenge for Code Enforcement.
Okay, so do we know why we lost the individuals that we lost in Economic Development? Have we done any exit interviews on that?
They, they ultimately have retired. Uh, one retired. Um, the, the other one took another job opportunity. Uh, actually, two took another job opportunity.
Okay, so I, I, I guess, and I won't belabor the point because of time. But I would strongly recommend, um, that, uh, we conduct exit interviews that are a little bit deeper than they just took a job opportunity and really, uh, dig a little deeper into why. Uh, I've been privy, um, to some information that I know is going to Taliyah that really speaks to the culture and climate within Economic Development, Taliyah G that is. And so I just would be mindful, um, of, you know, making sure that we're doing everything we can do to retain this talent. Uh, it, it, you know, I know we have a difficult time, um, you know, uh, hiring individuals of color, period. Uh, but to lose those individuals who I know are qualified uh, to do the job because of culture and climate is extremely problematic. And so, again, I haven't probed the issue too deeply, um, and I haven't pressed the issue. But I'm extremely concerned in terms of what's going on with respect to culture and climate as it pertains, uh, to those folks of color within the Economic Development Department. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Hurst. Uh, Councilor Allen?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tim, my question is simply the numbers. Uh, what, how many openings do you have in Code Enforcement and how many do you have in Economic Development?
Steve, I think you're in the meeting still. Do you have a, an exact number on that?
Currently, down eight positions, we currently now have five positions open between, uh, the Building Division and Housing Division. Uh, Building Division has two senior positions open and two local building inspector's position. The senior position is the Senior Building Inspector. That is open, and the senior, that's open. Uh, on the Housing and Code Enforcement side, we have, um, one inspector's position open. We recently just filled two positions over there. Uh, the senior inspector was an internal promotion, and we recently hired a young woman for a new housing inspector's position.
Steve, can you also speak to what the major challenges are in terms of the hiring?
Uh, major challenge is, is basically the rate of pay. It's, it's more of a contractual issue. Um, generally, which has been kind of the way we look at our department now. We've become the Western Mass Training Ground for inspectors. Uh, we lose a lot of our inspectors to local community. Um, I can say I've been building commission now for fifteen years. I've yet to hire a certified building inspector into the City of Springfield. One of the reasons is the rate of pay and because of the residency issue.
Thank you, Counselors. Uh, I just want to interject, and we are trickling into building and housing code, uh, related elements too, but realizing, Tim, the context you just gave, I'll just open it up to Counselors at this time for any questions on either.
I'll just open it up to Counselors at this time for any questions on either planning or building and housing code as well. Consular Hurst? Oh, and I'm sorry, Woodfield? You heard the question, Consular Hurst?
Yes, I'm sorry, I apologize. It actually, I was going to wait until building presented, but I will go now because I think it's relevant now. Steve, I'm going to ask the same question that I asked of you. I'm sorry, that I asked of Tim. Have we done any exit interviews in terms of why there is such a high turnover rate in your department and why it might be difficult to retain folks? I know you mentioned that, that other folks in other areas were paying more and were also, you said they were going to other areas. For what reasons? Do we know?
Yes, actually, we do actually retire just to make what's going on, feedback. But it's not rocket science, it's very, people leaving because of more money. There's a contractual issue that we've talked and met with TJ with this year. And HR with the building inspector side, it's basically because it's not that our top step isn't, isn't probably market rate. But the problem is, if we hire somebody, train somebody, by the time they can get the top step or market rate, it takes 10 years. So we go through the certification process, the city spends a lot of money on training, certification, the exams, all that's part of contractual issue. As soon as another community opens up, even if they live in the city, they'll go work for another community for $10,000, $15,000 more a year or even more. So I've lost my best and brightest talent. I've lost recently what my senior building inspector, he went to another community. I recently lost my senior electrical inspector. These are all minority candidates, they've been with me for years. They were first to the first in their positions, they were promoted up through, through, through over the years. But they didn't see the future. They've left, they went to other communities. So it's, it's, it's not an exiting interview issue. We know what TJ are. Hopefully, we can get some leeway on this, the contracts. But it is, but it is, it's, you know, it's two major issues. The residency issue makes it very hard to get people in these positions, a lot of it's just based on the type of position. If you look at building inspectors over the years, three generations ago, pretty much owned contractors out of the city. It's, you know, the city owns in most areas in the city. A contractor is not going to be able to live and develop and have his business. Nobody wants to see a gentleman four or five big trucks and equipment in their side yard or backyard. So most of the contractors moved out of the city years and years ago. And that's kind of what we hire from. So that's why a lot of our candidates, if they're looking at it, they may come from other communities. We do our best and we've done pretty well, the best we can over the last 16 years that been commissioned. But like I said, I've yet to be able to hire an actual certified building commissioner in the city. We have to hire somebody that makes the minimum standard. They have to be reviewed by the state to make sure they make the minimum standard. And then they have to start the testing and training program. And that goes on for a few years.
So, so let me just get to my point and then, and then you, we can move on, Mr. President. Again, another two individuals that we lost that were in senior level positions that were of color. And those individuals left, and I'll give you the exit interview, Steve. They left, one, because of culture and climate. Two, because there wasn't room for upward mobility. And three, because they were overwhelmed because we were understaffed. And all, two of the individuals that I've spoken to, who I know very well, would have stayed. And so I just think we need to make a better effort to really look introspectively at what it is that we're doing to ensure that the culture and climate is right to retain our individuals of color. On top of the fact that the job is stressful. So, you know, I appreciate what you're saying, but I just think we need to do better. And I'm telling you that there are issues. And so now that you know, I hope the expectation is that we can do better and conduct the exit interviews that will tell us.
As the head of the department, I have absolutely no problems with that and happy to work with personnel to go through that process.
We have to.
Quite frankly, it should be city policy as to, for every department.
I, I would agree, I would agree. And so I look forward to talking to you next year and hopefully we'll have it resolved. But I think it's extremely important.
I would agree.
I would agree with Tim, I 100% for that. If HR, if EG would like to be involved in these, bring these clear to, to make HR that sits down and does a contract with these people through their unions, you will see exactly where it is. Our people do need, because they feel like nowhere's to go. And the two positions that you were speaking of, they didn't have anywhere to go. They're senior level for their positions. So they, strictly because of the money. They get paid in uniform money because of some results. And you can't blame them, they're great individuals. But they act quite good. And you know, we have great relationships.
Thank you, Steve, I appreciate that. I just want to get to the other Counselors that have questions on specific budget items.
Okay, thank you.
I don't mean to cut you off, but Counselor, what's to you?
Thank you, I don't mean to add to it, but I want to talk about housing codes for a moment. And I'm talking specifically from the point of residence. I've been getting complaints about how folks that's going out to look at certain housing issues are treated by some of the staff in the housing department. This is all neighborhoods, I haven't had one from, I have had one from every neighborhood, a complaint that when these residents are asking questions, asking why they're there, why the housing code department is there, that they're either ignored or they're treated, mistreated or spoken negatively to. And so my question is, is there training dollars in the budget to get customer service training? Because they are our customers, right? They're our residents, if it attacks, customer service, I'm going to say sensitivity training, I mean humanity training. How we need to treat people as a city? Are there dollars in there for that? And I want to know if there's training upfront, like when they're being trained for their job, on how to interact with the residents?
Currently, we have a new inspector who's hired, she was hired, she's put in a few times. She's going through the training process right now, so it's actually, she is on train. Being a field with a senior inspector, actually, we spend generally, they end up with probably three to four months hands-on training with the inspector in the field to see how things are handled and filled with, even with mobile type situations. We're going to, these inspectors deal very extreme situations when they're out there. So they have to learn and have personal skills. And some of these situations are very difficult. In some cases, we have to have the police department with us. Some cases, we have to have court orders to make entry at these properties. So in a lot of cases, these people aren't very happy when it comes to code enforcement. Nobody likes to see code enforcement come at their front door, especially if they're on the enforcement side of it. But there is, there's a lot of training, there's ongoing training all the time. We don't get much training at all from the state for the housing inspectors. It's always basically hands-on training. If there is, is the issue, generally, it's always addressed to management. What we will do if we have a client, look to meet with the opportunity, with people, get everything in writing. It's the both sides of the, the issue to see what's going on. Is it an in-house issue? Is it somebody that, maybe it's an inspector that lost his school, it shouldn't have lost his school, they're expected to. As you say, the citizens of the city, no matter what they look at, they're supposed to be customers. They should be getting a professional person that's coming out and dealing with the situation, no matter what's at hand. So yes, there is training, there's not actual dollars, it's actually part of our regime, it's always ongoing.
I know it could be a tough situation and things could be heated, so I do understand that. I did working customer service for 10 years and, you know, it is tough. So my second and final question is, how many times can a property be cited for, for a particular code?
Well, I can say to multiple, it all depends on compliance. No compliance will be citing the property. Only somebody will get your first notice application. They'll have so many days for correction for the re-instruction.
I can't.
Yeah, Steve, 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 I'm sorry, you're having some technical difficulties.
Maybe I can just get that in writing, like the time span, like between sites fighting, when the next one could come up and how many times they could be cited. I don't, I don't mind waiting on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, if you want to give me a search, that's our call, we can talk. It's not really a budget question, I mean, we can, I can have a meeting in my office. I'll be happy to meet with you.
Sure.
Thank you, Consular Woodfield, Consular Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't realize how my hands are. Well, Tim, quick question. For the building code and housing code, how many, I see that we have 28 FTE for building and we have about 15 FTE for housing. FTE coming up for housing. How many of those positions are actually inspectors?
Steve, can you attempt to answer that question?
Which, which division were you asking about?
For both, the building and housing.
Housing.
He wants to know how many of the personnel that are listed are actually inspectors? So how many inspectors do you have for the division?
Building Division, you've got three divisions, you've got plumbing, electrical, gas, and the building. Building, if we're full staff, we have six inspectors on the road and a plant counter and deputy commissioner. We have four, the time, plumbing, there's gas inspectors. Four electrical. Then on the housing side, you would have.
Yes, Mr. Desilis, I'm sorry, your service is very choppy at this time.
We can certainly get that to you if you, we'll send it to the whole council.
Yeah, if you could, Tim, you'll provide, email me that information, that'll be good.
Sure.
That's all the question that I have.
Appreciate it, Consular, thank, thank, thank you. Consular Hurst?
Just quickly, sorry, Mr. President. Just a quick question, Tim, and I don't know if you, if you don't know the answer, that's fine. Is there a fund that is, that residents can access who have been cited for code enforcement violations who might not have the means to repair what the issues are? Is there anything included in the budget? And if not, why now? Or is that a possibility?
Well, there's two issues. One is that there's always been an emergency fund to deal with emergencies. And that ultimately is run through the Housing Division. But, and I appreciate this question because you've, you've asked it of me a couple of times and I, I think it's critically important. If you're outside of that emergency, you don't necessarily have the resources to do, you know, the improvement that ultimately could make your, your, your house code compliant. And you don't, you're a low, moderate income individual and you have a home and you're trying to figure out, okay, I got cited. We, we're working with housing to figure out, you know, how we can actually establish a fund that is outside of those emergency repairs to, to actually address that question. So the, the answer is, it's coming. And I, it's coming within a short window of time.
Right, okay, I've heard from a number of residents who are extremely disappointed. One with just being cited, but two, with the fact that they might not have the means to make the, you know, correct the violations that code has cited them for. So thank you.
That, that is a HUD issue in terms of, you know, doing code compliance. Is that HUD looks at code compliance as being holistic? Not just that you go out and you cite somebody, but you ultimately have to have a programming structure in place to be able to assist the people that can't ultimately undertake the, financially undertake the repairs necessary to facilitate or to remove the, the violation.
And so why don't we have that? If that's, why don't we have that?
I don't know what the answer was previously. I, I, I wasn't here.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, all right.
It's, it's an issue though. HUD comes back and says that you really shouldn't be going out doing code compliance unless you have the, you know, a holistic program that takes you through, you know, once you get cited, if you don't have the means to, to ultimately resolve that and you, you're, you're, you're income qualified, that you ultimately have to, you know, look to provide programming resources to help those individuals.
Got it, okay, thank you, good to know. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Consular Hurst. Are there any other questions for planning or building and housing? Seeing none, we will move to centralized dispatch.
Good evening, Counselors. If the centralized dispatch facility, the budget for this year is listed, $2.8 million. And then we have an offset for state grants that we get our actual funding down that the city will spend of $1.1 million. That covers 38 FTE full-time equivalents that cover both call-taking, fire and police dispatch from our new unified dispatch facility on Roosevelt Avenue. And if you take any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any questions from the council at this time? Consular Woodfield.
Same question, Commissioner. Any positions that you asked for that you were not awarded?
No, ma'am, we are fully staffed and fully funded. We've gotten everything we've asked for, for the Department of Dispatch, or for the Department of Dispatch Division. We've added supervision, so there's supervision on all shifts now. So we're moving forward and picking up very positive path at the dispatch now.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you, Consular Woodfield, Consular Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. BJ, just a question on the full integration. I know we did the full integration of the two dispatch operations into one. Have, I believe that's been completed. If you could just give a comment on that and whether it's going to provide any efficiencies down the road?
Sure, we completed the joint dispatch venture right around the second week of January, became, began training on the new facility. We finished on time and on budget with that project. The benefits are already starting to be seen in the terms of efficiency and cross-training between the fire dispatchers and police dispatchers. When the true efficiency can kick in is when we're all on the same CAD system. Right now, there's a police CAD and a fire CAD because we, they came from divergent systems. We're out to RFP right now to buy a new unified CAD for both fire and police. Once we fully integrate the new CAD system, we'll see a lot of increase in efficiency. We've seen increase in efficiency just by being co-located. But then the next increase in efficiency will take place once everybody's on the same CAD system.
So, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Consular Allen, Consular Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good to see you, Commissioner Colby. Is the money for the new CAD system within that budget or you're going to be coming back for?
That's going to be bonded for the new, the new CAD system is going to have to be bonded. It's a multimillion dollar expenditure for the new CAD.
How much?
I don't have the final figures yet.
We haven't authorized the amount yet because we still have to get the actual pricing. We've done a show, book of pricing, but we'll need to get, once we narrow it down, we'll come back to the council.
Okay, excellent, so $1.9 to $2 million. Excellent, excellent, you guys have been doing good work and I can see, I myself can attest that it's more efficient. Commissioner Colby, I do make the request again, sir, to have a tour of the facility. I asked you once, you told me because of COVID-19 issues. But it seems like we're doing better, so I would love to get a tour of the facility along with the other counselors. I know the people have already toured the facility, so I would like to, to do the same with my colleagues. At your, at your convenience, sir.
Absolutely, anytime you would like a tour now, just give me a call. We had limited access into the CAD area because of COVID-19 and just if we got COVID in there, it would have been disastrous, so. I was allowed in there, but now that things have quieted down, I'd be happy to give a tour anytime, do anybody would like to come up there.
Absolutely, so we'll be in contact, hopefully we could do in the next couple of months. Thank you, Commissioner, thank you for your great jobs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Consular.
Thank you, Councilor Davila. Councilor Letterman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Colby, I know when I had come and sat uh with the previous dispatch director, there was some concern at that time over um high turnover rates just because of the stress of the position. Just wondering if that's leveled off or how that's looking in the upcoming fiscal year.
We have six openings right now. Uh, we are continuing to lose people. We've had people go to other careers. We've had people go to other dispatch centers. The problem is we are a very high-paced metropolitan center. So people can go to another center and make the same money or even a little less and have a quieter schedule and have a quieter shift. So that's the issues we're fighting now. We've lost a couple of people due to residency because they were given the job, they moved to the community. And then as their year was drawing to a close, they decided that they were going to take a job in another center that didn't require residency that once we'd already trained them. So, uh.
What are the hiring requirements?
Uh, we have, it's a civil service position and the civil service test for that, they have to sign up. And then they have to take a basic typing test. And you have to pass the typing test to advance to the next interview round. And then from there, it's regular job interview type thing.
Is it, is it a, it require a degree?
No degree required.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Are there any other questions? Councilor Davila?
Sorry, I was muted there. Uh, I would love to ask, Commissioner, if you know, how many nine-one-one calls do we get a year roughly?
Uh, this fire department answers roughly sixteen sixteen thousand calls a year. And the police department was two hundred and sixty thousand, so roughly two hundred and eighty, two hundred and ninety thousand calls per service year coming to the nine-one-one system.
Okay, and um, that's, that's, wow, that's a lot of calls. Um, all right, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Councilor Davila. Do we have any other questions at this time? All right, seeing none, we will then go to fire. Commissioner Colby will pass it right back.
Okay, uh, so fire department. Let me get to this page. The fire department budget for this year is twenty four point nine million dollars. That covers two hundred and eighty-four department positions, two hundred and sixty-nine of those are the uniform positions. We operate eight fire stations strategically located around the city still, eight engine companies, four ladder trucks, one heavy rescue squad, uh, two tactical medical units and two district chiefs on duty twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. The budget that I requested is fully funded. It enables me to continue my protective year replacement programs, apparatus replacement and all the other programs the fire department runs like uh community education, community outreach and all safe program, uh, inspections we do in the houses. So we are fully funded and level service.
Right, thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any questions at this time for fire? And I'll ask Councilor Allen. Now, Allen, you're muted?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner, could you just tell us how many openings you have at this time?
I believe we have six openings this at this time, just due to a couple retirements we've just had. Uh, we will probably hire. Takes us a couple of months to get through the hiring process. I would anticipate by September, we'll be hiring a class of six to eight based on pending retirements.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Allen, are there any other questions at this time? And I'll ask if there are any other questions at this time. See, none, we will move to the last item this evening, which is the police.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilor. Um, I have to apologize, Commissioner Quatton is going to be here tonight because of a prior engagement. And, uh, TJ is going to brief our budget.
So I'm not sure if the council is aware, but uh I have recently taken over as the interim director of business and technology on behalf of the police department. Uh, probably for the next four to six months anyway, to help uh do and help their, help their finances. So the police department's budget is nearly fifty-two million dollars. It's fully funded, the complement of sworn civilian personnel. Uh, all the necessary supplies and services are required to meet all the uh SPD's operational needs. Uh, the critical equipment, uh, vests, the portable radios, uh, vehicle are all fully funded. The gaming enforcement unit, metro unit, uh, Quebec unit, ordinance, real-time crime analysis center are fully funded. Uh, the personal services front, forty point nine million of the budget goes towards uh six hundred FTEs that make up the police department. That includes five hundred and twelve sworn uh ABH civilians. Uh, within the sworn is one commissioner, three deputy chiefs, eleven captains, twenty lieutenants, forty-eight sergeants and one hundred and twenty-nine officers. Uh, the Quinnville this year is three point one million for the uh education center for our uh officers. Overtime is at one point eight million dollars. Holiday pay is at a hundred and ninety thousand, quartet's at six hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, it also includes a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars for training. This includes uh de-escalation training, management training, risk mitigation, uh, training for radio, uh, radio repair, uh, traffic, uh, accident, uh, training to reconstruct accidents. It fully funds all the equipment that are needed for officer safety and allows the officers perform the life-saving duties that they have. Uh, with the defibrillators, uh, the vests, we're doing vests for fifty officers and thirty-five recruits. Uh, we have a Taser replacement program that's currently ongoing to uh replace the Tasers uh that we have. We have sixty new uh portable radio units that we've ordered for the new recruits. And all the replacement hardware to ensure that the crime analysis unit is fully up and running. For professional services, we have three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars uh for scanning of academy records and I I U documents. Uh, maintaining the public relations campaign that has started in fiscal twenty-one. And then we are working towards physical and psychiatric uh exams in order to uh maintain a mental health and physical health for our officers. K nine units fully funded and we're replacing any K nine dogs that are coming out of service. And we are also funding all the software for body one cameras for social, uh, social media stuff or cloud storage for the body one cameras. We've been adding additional mile for ShotSpotter that will go up uh the other side of the X and Forest Park uh up to the Forest Park neighborhood. And we're doing facility upgrades at uh one thirty Pearl Street as well. So that is a high-level overview of the police department's budget. We're spending nearly fifty-two million dollars and we will open up any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you, TJ. Uh, and Deputy, uh, I'll pass it to Councilor Letterman.
Thanks, Mr. President. Deputy, it's good to see you. I just have one question for tonight. Uh, does this budget as presented maintain the funding for the Hub and Core program and the Hub and Core coordinator that we put in the budget a couple of years ago?
Yes, it does.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Letterman. Councilor Ramos? Councilor Ramos? All right, he may be having difficulty, so we'll circle back with him, Councilor.
Did you call? And Davila?
Sorry, was that Councilor Davila or Councilor Allen?
No, Councilor Davila?
Oh, thank you, sorry. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, gentlemen, uh, good afternoon. Deputy, good to see you. Uh, TJ, I'm thrilled to hear that we're getting here in Forest Park, one mile of ShotSpotter. Uh, it's a very welcome addition to this area. Uh, excellent news. Uh, Deputy, can you tell me a little bit more about, uh, here, he says, uh, new software for crime, crime analysis? Can you tell me about a little bit about what that is?
Can you repeat that, Councilor Davila?
Yeah, it says here that uh there is new software for crime analysis.
Yeah, that's the software that we're upgrading to ensure that crime analysis maintains its um abilities to do the real-time crime analysis and the upgrades to the commissioner's uh room to show, make sure that everyone's fully briefed and has access to the the real-time crime analysis center.
Okay, I know the crime analysis has been very successful in the past uh as well, right? Uh, Deputy, quick question. Um, I believe all the cruisers have a defibrillator, correct?
Yes, others, officers on the street, they, they should have eighty, eighty, eighty D.
Yeah, and Deputy, do, does every cruiser also have Narcan kits?
Yes, absolutely.
They do have Narcan kits?
Yes.
Okay, I did not know. That's great news. Um.
I've stayed with that over the past few years.
Okay, again, I I feel like I'm learning a few things today in this meeting, excellent. And my last question is, um, it says here, um, the last bullet point, page nineteen. Um, contractual step increases on the city's agreement for the IBPO and SPA supervisors' union. Um, thus on their personal service, the last bullet point.
Yeah.
But but as I recall correctly, we did not approve the supervisors' union.
Correct, so the supervisors' union and the IBPO do not have um active contracts as it relates to the ongoing, just the overall IBPO. But officers based on years of service are still have or entitled to steps and to move along the steps that exist on the contract.
Right, so why are we including supervisors here?
Because supervisors, in spite of not having a contract, they're going to be paid their current rate because of the years of service, they get to move a step based upon that.
Oh, okay, okay. So when the contract does get approved, then we will transfer that money from somewhere else.
It'll be retro, they would get the retro piece of that step.
Okay, good, good, excellent, excellent. Uh, and I hope we can get that resolved ASAP as well, by the way. Because they they do serve, they do deserve a contract as well. Thank you. Thank you, Deputy.
Thank you, Councilor Davila. Councilor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. Um, my question has to do with training. So TJ, I'm on page, I'm in the back of the book where there's a little more detail. And I'm looking at, on page forty-seven, uh, professional services at three hundred and forty-two thousand, seminars and education at a hundred and thirty-one. Uh, so that's four seventy-three. Are there other lines that are that pertain to training? Those are the two that stuck out to me.
I mean, um, the training one, seminars, education and training, uh, is another one. Dues and memberships is another one. Uh, all are are related to training. Uh, in addition, there isn't additional training money, uh, oh. There isn't any additional money based upon the um Department of Justice negotiating with the city. Um, once we have a negotiated agreement with the Department of Justice, we will come back to the council uh for additional appropriation based upon that agreement. So there's going to be additional training to the hundred and fifty thousand or so, uh, three hundred thousand or so. And here, we will come to the council for appropriation.
Okay, so, but this four seventy-three plus the dues gets you to four ninety. Um, was that based, and and I understand about the DOJ, understand there'll be a probably some recommendations out of that. But was this um just a, you know, an increase from the last year by a percentage increase? Or was this contemplating, uh, you know, the national conversation about police training? I don't know, I don't know what the average, you know, this is about a thousand dollars an officer. Um, you know, I, we got four or five hundred officers or something. I don't know where that is and what the recommendations would be about increasing training. Do you have any knowledge or info on that?
I'll let the deputy comment a little further on it, but in addition to those funding, we have a lot of in-service training that we pull our officers uh to come in and get training and a whole host of uh areas. And that's kind of the money that you don't see because it's in overtime and they're coming in to meet with our professionals uh to train in certain areas, whether it's de-escalation, whether it's other areas of training, uh, that's where where a lot of training takes place that is quote-unquote cost neutral. Uh, and then there's the national trainings and then there's the state trainings and then there's uh the bureau trainings. I don't know, Deputy, if you have any more thoughts on the training piece, but uh. And then we have a lot of training and grants and then, you know, so there's a lot of money out there. I think it would probably help if Lindsay and I pulled together and Lisa Willis and I pulled together um all the different funding sources we have for all the different training. Uh, this.
Yeah, that's what I was.
And our plan is to uh add and augment that once we have an agreement with the Department of Justice.
Yeah, I think, uh, I would love to hear what, you know, uh, Deputy Rupert Daniel has to say about it. Uh, but I would, I like what your suggestion was. That was my, what I was going to suggest is that we probably need a separate document with all the training, all the different pieces and what the strategy is. Because that is, um, you know, which, you know, it can tie in with this document, but just so we we all understand about it, because so much of the police reform stuff comes back to training, et cetera. Uh, so I appreciate what you just said and I'd love to hear what Deputy Daniel has to say about it.
One more thing is, like, um, one of the things we're really trying to do is get get our supervisors a lot more training, especially in leadership. I think that's kind of a part that we've been taking, I get a lot of guys haven't been stepping up and taking charge of different scenarios, different situations, and we've been really pushing that hard. And like, um, TJ was saying, a lot of that training, we back forward overtime. That officer goes or that supervisor goes to their training and then we cover that slide down with another officer and a supervisor in overtime. But that's been our big push is getting the leadership squared away.
Yes, so, so thank you for saying that. I remember in a, in a contract extension, a one-year proposed extension. I'd say it was last fall. Uh, one of the, one of the things in the proposed extension was uh an assessment center to better assess people's leadership, just what you were just saying. Uh, we didn't approve the contract, so are you, are you able to do any of that assessment center type things yourselves? Or do you need that contract approved? Or how does that work?
Yeah, we need that, that's some negotiations that we have to do that through the contract.
Yeah, we need the contract for that piece, but what the deputy is saying is that in spite of the contract, we could still do our own leadership training and our own situational training um for those that we identify that uh could benefit from it. And what I hear the council saying, uh, at least I had last year and again this year is um, kind of give us a breakdown of all the training that has happened and what exists in the police department. And I'm going to work with the deputies and the commissioners to to provide that uh document and that kind of summary of all the different things. I think there's a lot more, certainly in my world, when I got over to the police department, there's a lot more uh training and a lot more behind the scenes that I even, that I didn't even realize. So, um, I could pull that document together in the next week or so, probably, and get it out to the council.
That that would be really helpful. Thanks for listening. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Councilor Allen. Uh, Councilor Davila? Uh, actually, Councilor Davila, before we get to you, Councilor Ramos was in the queue and got disconnected. Councilor Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was having difficulty with my phone. I'm locked on on my laptop now. Um, Deputy Daniels, um, I I missed the 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 presentation because I was having, uh, again, phone, phone, um, issues. Don't know if you mentioned this, but uh typically the person that presents the budget is the commissioner. Um, did you, um, did you say anything, did you mention anything about her absence tonight?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, she wasn't able to attend because of a prior engagement.
She's, she's actually had a wake, uh, couldn't attend tonight.
Okay, it is, should we, should we expect the commissioner to be present at the, um, at the budget hearing?
I would anticipate that to be the case.
All right, I'm glad to hear that. Uh, Deputy Daniels, a couple of questions. Um, first, um, uh, what is the, uh, what is the overtime budget compared, as compared to last year?
One point eight million dollars is the appropriated amount.
And what was the last year?
One point eight, so the city council reduced it by two hundred thousand.
We reduced it to one point six?
Correct.
Were, were, uh, were you able to fulfill the department's overtime demands with one point six million?
Absolutely not. The vacancy rate we have, we typically run between two point one and two point three million in overtime a year. Uh, and Lisa, are we running roughly that again this year? Sorry, you're muted, but I think we're running roughly that again this year.
Lisa, we're unable. No, she's not muted, but we are not.
Something wrong with the other microphone. So, yeah, we run roughly two point one to two point three million uh at overtime a year. We budget approximately one point eight. We figured through attrition that will be able to make up the difference. We budget approximately one point eight, we figured through attrition, that will be able to make up the difference, uh, in overtime that is needed. Uh, this year, we were able to absorb a lot of additional costs in the police department's budget based upon, uh, the Quebec team not being budgeted by the school department, we absorbed all of those officers back in the budget without needing a transfer, we absorbed the overtime. Clearly, we weren't in court, we didn't have to utilize court time because courts were closed, uh, much of the year. So, um, we were able to absorb the, the, the cut, but also provide the level of service needed in our police department.
And, and so I, 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 I know that there recently, there was a, a request, um, and I can't remember who exactly made the request, which organization made the request, in relation to, um, the city of Springfield, uh, police department overtime, um, budget and, uh, sort of breakdown. And it was determined that, uh, the city of Springfield wa- was not doing a very good job, or was implicated that we were doing a very good job of keeping records of overtime. Where, where are we on that?
Our overtime records are spot on, that the way it's done, and I've, I've been able to observe myself.
And, and we addressed that, uh, when that first came out, that, what it was is basically we do paper forms for our overtime. So guys, instead of like writing the name on, on every single line, they write the name on the first line and do like check marks or something on the next line. Accountants, that kind of stuff drives accountants nuts. Had a staff meeting, I addressed that to all the, um, captains, captains and sergeants. Now, we've, we've cut down those kind of mistakes, you know, out of platform, being filled out properly and everything, and the ones that aren't, we send back. You know, so we, we basically addressed it, but that's basically just a matter of not filling out paperwork enough in detail. It wasn't about, um, any kind of overtime abuses or anything like that.
Kind of controls to, on the overtime side.
How, how does our, how does our city's, uh, record-keeping for overtime compare to other municipalities? And is there potential for abuse under the, our current system?
So we, the overtime that's done through a special detail is assigned to a special detail office, and then they report back, uh, when the detail is filled. That is done, that's the only paper-based system that I'm aware of based upon.
I don't care, I will attend, there's a, there's a supervisor, there's at least two supervisors involved in, in our overtime. So the volunteer gets the overtime, gets that supervisor sign off on it, and then there's a captain that signs off on that, or a, and a deputy chief. That's like two or three supervisors see each overtime report, um, form that gets pulled out.
In addition, we add some overtime, uh, to tell us staff, and those are the other ones that the officers can sign up for through tell us staff, which is our, um, payment and record system for scheduling our officers.
Now, is that, is that best practice, or is there any, any, some sort of, uh, updated, um, technology or system that we can u- utilize?
So, right, yeah, so right now, I am having conversations with Telus, Kronos Tell Us Staff, uh, doing a re-implementation and an upgrade to the Tell Us Staff module that we have, uh, to make it a lot more, uh, technology-based and a lot less paper-based. And that, uh, had that conversation recently, about, about three or four weeks ago. And now that COVID's, uh, kind of coming to an end, we're looking to engage them in some demos and some, uh, strategy sessions to start the work in the fall.
Okay. Okay, no, I'm glad to hear that. Now, um, my final question, uh, is in, relative to the DOJ, uh, report, and, uh, the recommendations, more, more specifically, uh, that were made under that DOJ report, um, there were four very specific recommendations that were made, uh, Deputy Daniels, to, to your knowledge, which, how many and which of those four recommendations have been fully implemented by the Springfield Police Department one year later?
We're still working with the DOJ, uh, specific thing, so at this time, I'm going to say nothing has been implemented, but we are working on it and it will be done soon, but we still, it's, it's a process. We got to work with DOJ, and we still have this police reform bill, and I know they're getting, the captains, since everybody's involved in it, we've sent out a lot of these different policies, they've been rewritten. Judy Cross has been signing up on it, making sure that they make, meet all the certification requirements we have to have. But it's just, it's, it's a lot of documents, it's a lot of, lot of back and forth, lot of negotiations, and we're working on it.
Okay, and, uh, from the four recommendations that were made by the Springfield City Council, the four very specific recommendations that were made, uh, one year ago on the city hall, um, steps, uh, how many of those four recommendations have been fully implemented by Springfield Police Department to date?
The best I know is none.
No further questions, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Consul Ramos, Consul Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, just to kind of, uh, make a comment on, uh, the recommendations, uh, before I ask my questions. Uh, at least my hope that those recommendations are implemented, uh, as soon as possible, um. One of my most bittersweet thoughts was wanting to approve for a six million dollar law settlement lawsuit against SPD. You know, I, I, we need to stop that bleeding, um, in those city sites, so just a general comment on that. Uh, but questions are, um, so quick question, on page forty-seven, uh, it says forty-four thousand dollars for food, is that for the prisoners?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, nice and easy. Now, um, TJ, can you walk me a little bit so I understand? Uh, if you're saying that the average overtime is two point three, roughly two to two point three a year, uh, well, first of all, is that overtime only for patrolling purposes or special details? It doesn't include?
Not include special detail, special details paid for by the vendor who requests, or the business who requests a special detail.
But if they need to do some sort of, um, I don't know, was it word that, uh, a deputy, um?
Most of that overtime, we're talking about spending on hot spot patrols, and we do the extra fiber details, bicycles, details. Um, you might want to select the out-train vehicles, you know, we, we're using that most of the overtime for those type of things. And then, also to make up for staffing story too, because we're really, we really hurt right now, we got a lot of officers retired. A lot of officers went to the state police, a lot of officers left the job.
Does that include investigations, homicide, uh, drug investigation?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it would.
Okay, it does, okay, so I'm just trying to figure out, uh, if you could just walk me, help me understand, if it usually takes two to two point three, why only ask for one point eight?
Because typically, if they were in a perfect world, but they were fully staffed and didn't have to worry about fifty or so vacancies at any given time, they'd only need one point eight million dollars in appropriation. Uh, they have not been fully staffed in probably a decade, if not longer, because of attrition, because of, uh, tight budgets and all the other stuff that we've had to go through. Uh, so now we're making a concerted effort to fully fund the complement of six hundred employees at the police department.
Okay, got, got. Now, my last question, TJ, is, uh, regarding to the Queen Bill, uh, three point one million dollars. I do recall we had a meeting, and there was a discussion of the possibility of changing how that money is dispersed, uh, as, as, as opposed to yearly to weekly. And I think they said we're going to save two hundred thousand dollars a year for the city side.
That is correct, we've had a conversation, that was a presentation by the Director of Internal Audit, Young No. Uh, that requires us to negotiate and get it into the contract to pay it out, uh, more frequently than once a year. Uh, I'm not sure that the unions will go for it, but it's something we are going to ask for. Uh, it would be much easier and a much, uh, better since, uh, process for us. Uh, but we have done this process for the last probably twenty years, I don't know, maybe longer, of one time in November, first paycheck in November, and that's just the way it's been done, and I want to personally get to that level, uh, but I can't do it alone, I need the unions to agree to it.
Right, and so we are, we're going to be saving roughly two hundred thousand dollars, right?
It could be if we, if they agree to it.
It's a significant amount, okay. All right, thank you, TJ, thank you.
Thank you, Consul Davila, Consul Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President, uh, TJ, my only question is on overtime, and it's not, uh, how much or anything. Um, I, I know you were looking at the systems for reporting overtime and all that stuff. I just want to point out, I'm sure most people know that the state police had an overtime problem a year ago. The Boston police are having an overtime inquiry right now. So I just suggesting, uh, if you're trying to improve procedures or whatever, that there are probably some outcomes from those two situations that might help us out.
So, Consul, I, I agree with you, uh, I've looked at the state police one, I have not seen the Boston police one yet. Uh, I know Young No and Director of Internal Audit is going to do a full, uh, payroll audit across the entire city, including overtime for police, fire, DPW and all the other. So that'll be a larger audit, but that, uh, will help test a lot of our procedures and our internal control.
Okay, good, thanks.
All right, thank you, Consul Allen, Consul Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll be as brief as possible, I had to spend it up in the police department, but we'll be as brief as possible, TJ. What I would like is, uh, a list of all the grants in the police department that, um, gives overtime to the police department. All the grants that gives overtime to the police department.
Yes, we can get that for you. Uh, we sent all the grants to those, kind of, tonight for all grants, but we will get you the ones that are specific to overtime.
Yes, then, uh, I wanted to point you out a request that came from Pioneer Valley Project to, um, the mayor and the police department about a Springfield community crisis response team. The response that we got back was from Sergeant Bryant Elliott, that it's a similar model to the Kahoots model. And the Springfield Community Crisis Response Team kind of mimics a national, um, a national program that Bryant Elliott said the Kahoots program model surpasses. And so, I don't know if that's true, but I would like to have conversations about this model. It will cost about two hundred and fifty thousand to implement, and maybe another five hundred thousand to get off the, off the ground, which eighty-five percent of it is reimbursable, um, to the city as long as the city isn't the lead agency. And so Pioneer Valley Project came to the city about this model, it's about mental health, um, right? People in mental health crisis where the police responds to those crises, and maybe they're not the appropriate party to respond to the crisis. Uh, it's a model that probably helped our city, um, sometimes police respond not knowing that this individual is suffering from a mental health issue, and they're not handled appropriately because they might be under distress and, you know, they could be aggressive or whatever it is. But instead of brushing off, saying we already have this, let's open up to the. That it's not an either or, any and all solutions to help our city move forward to helping our residents with any type of issues that they have is beneficial. And so I'm hoping, TJ, I did not know that you were over helping the police department, but I have had success, I'll say, with having conversations with you and, and getting these conversations going. And so maybe instead of being dismissive and saying, well, we got a program that's already better than that program, that we can have these conversations and talk about the funding, um, did you want to respond, deputy?
I, I just want to ask you, what is the name of that, specific name of that program they're recommending?
So I can send you the email on what they're recommending, it's the Springfield Community Crisis Response Team, but it is, um, based on, it's based on a program that is out here nationally, so what I'll do is I'll send you their request, and then I'll send you, um, Sergeant Elliott's response, so you can see, um, exactly what they're talking about. But I would appreciate, instead of being dismissive, which a lot of times we get from the leadership in the police department, because I got a dismissive, um, email, just requesting information, um, from, just requesting information from Commissioner, I got a really nasty, um, email back from Captain Duda that I didn't appreciate, um, instead of us doing that to each other, let's have these conversations. It's not an attack on the police department, it's just something that, um, we should have discussions about. I think the model is called the Kahoots model, that this Springfield Community Crisis Response Team would mimic, so Kahoots, K-A-H-O-O-T-S.
Can I ask, did you say it was reimbursed by?
It's reimbursed by the ARP funds.
Oh.
It's in the ARP funding, for three years, it's a reimbursable project as long as it's not. And I also have an illegal opinion by Tom Moore, that I can, uh, Attorney Moore, that I can also send, um, to you all, because I, I always go for my legal opinion. And so I just want, wanted to say that and kind of discuss that funding and how, if, if possible, we can make it work. Um, that's the second thing, and, you know, I'm getting old, so I always forget, by the time I finish one thing, I forget the next thing that I wanted to talk about. So if I remember, deputy, I'll reach out to you or TJ and, um, figure out what my third point was, because right now I lost it. It's been a long meeting. Thank you for listening.
I'll definitely get back to you and trust it won't be dismissive.
You never have been, you've been very professional, I think you are the, a great choice, um, for deputy, and I really appreciate working for you, and I will send you that information.
Thank you, Consul Whitfield, I actually have a question, TJ and, and deputy, just on conversation that I was having with a retired officer, uh, Ruben Barrero, actually, at the time of giving his proclamation. I know Consul Davila was, was there as well, um, just in regards to just also realizing the, the insane amount of construction that's going on right now, and our streets and pavings, and it just seems like it's all over the place. So I just had a question on the detail used for, um, those type of activities. And I know there, you know, we've had, we've had discussions around the program for, for cops that are kind of like aging out of the department to, to, to have opportunities to fill those roles. Can you just give me some insight on that and how we're doing with that? And also, if we utilize any like deputy sheriffs or sheriffs in the, of course, that, that, that department, um, to, uh, also do those activities?
Yes, sir, so, um, right now, as we're progressing, so, if an officer, if they're retired and they're still under sixty-five years old, and it's within two years of their last in-service training, we'll bring them back, and they've had a good record, no A U complaints, um, not a lot of I O D and sick tech. We bring them back as special police officers, and then they do road details. As far as like the order, a reactive officer first, then a supervisor, then we'll go to the, um, SPOs. We can't fill a position with, uh, any of those three, then we call the sheriff's department. Lately, we've had a lot of sheriffs, we're going to, there's a ton of overtime out there right now. And, um, if the officer's been gone more than two years and they have to go back to get, get some retraining and stuff like that, but we're still bringing back this one, he's still under, uh, maximum age of sixty-five.
Okay, thank you, deputy, and just the last question on that, who sets the sixty-five-year-old threshold, and why is it, why? That's state law, okay, perfect. All right, thank you, uh, Consul Ramos?
President, thank you, I just want to speak in, in, in favor of, uh, what Consul Whitfield was, um, um, mentioning, uh, earlier about the Kahoots program. Um, in, in addition to what she mentioned, um, regarding the eighty-five percent reimbursement cost for the first three years, um, there's also, um, it, it also calls for one hundred percent reimbursement for any setup costs, uh, in accordance to the COVID relief package. Um, so, you know, this is, uh, some that's not going to cost the city of Springfield a dime to set up, uh, will be one hundred percent reimbursed, and then eighty-five percent reimbursement for the first three years. Um, it's not a, a, a new concept, it has been happening in other, um, other cities across the country. In Oregon, uh, they've had it in, um, in place since two thousand and, uh, fourteen, Eugene, Oregon. And they've diverted, um, according to a study, five, five to eight percent of nine-one-one calls, and they've saved the city an average of eight point five million dollars a year, um, since two thousand and fourteen. And in Denver, in the first six months, uh, under their program, um, they've, uh, they diverted seven hundred and forty-eight calls. And in Denver, in the first six months, uh, under their program, um, they've, uh, they diverted seven hundred and forty-eight calls. With no assistance from police officers, and there were zero arrests in those seven hundred and forty-eight calls. So, you know, we're talking, we're not only talking about a, a cost, um, a, a common sense measure, but we're also talking about a, a, um, a cost-saving measure. Uh, we talk about, we, we just discussed overtime for the police department, and we've heard. Uh, the police commissioner go on record and write op-eds in a Republican about how hard it is to recruit. Uh, new police officers and the fact that we're struggling to find new police officers. This will be a, uh, common sense alternative that will save the many, the city money and address some of those other concerns, so. Uh, we'd love to work on that with you, Consul Whitfield. I think it's common sense, and I think it's, uh, it will be good for the city of Springfield.
Absolutely, and thank you so much for those details, because I, I didn't know that about the setup cost, so that is fantastic, and yes, let's work on this together.
Thank you, Consulers, uh, Ramos and Whitfield. Are there any other questions at this time for the police department? Again, I'll ask, are there any other questions for the police department? All right, seeing none at this time, I, I first.
Counselor, I have one more question for the police department. Is the same one, TJ? You asked for in the budget, and is there anything you need? A specific position that you didn't ask for?
Uh, well, uh, I think I funded them perfectly fine.
All right, that's it.
At this point, the only thing that we don't have in here, and I mentioned before, is the DOJ requirements, and whatever that is, we're gonna bring a supplemental appropriation to the city council. Uh, to discuss what those needs are.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you, Consul Whitfield. I think we might be in the clear now. I just want to first thank you for your patience. Uh, it's, it's definitely been a long meeting, but I think the, the conversations that, uh, took place were definitely insightful and will make us. Uh, help us make a more informed decision, uh, at the time of the budget vote. So just want to thank you all for your due diligence.
And if any other information that's needed from any of the councilors, let us know, and we'll get it to you prior to the vote.
Appreciate it, TJ. Thank you, thank you.
Have a good night.
I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.